It's now. No, I don't.
You're on?
Or no?
Yeah.
You're good. I just don't know how to start the recorder.
Well, we were gonna start with swearing in of Commissioner Wilson. Gonna be swearing in by proxy? Is that a thing? Happens when you don't show up on time and get volunteered for him, so.
Oh, he has a disease.
No. When did you break that?
I didn't break it. I tore my bicep off. Carrying insulation. Nothing fine. I wish I could say it was snowballing. No, I can't snowball.
You have to tie your arm to the... You're gonna need a left-hand throttle.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, welcome to the Morgan County Commissioned Work Session, January 3rd, 2023. We are going to start with swearing in of one of our commissioners. So we did have a swearing-in ceremony this morning for most of the elected officials. Commissioner Wilson needs to get sworn in here, so we're gonna have him come down in front, and Leslie will, our clerk auditor, will handle that swearing-in.
My hands are raised.
Is this a joke? Like, are you supposed to raise your...
It's already to the square. Get a picture. Get a picture. We're all laughing.
I state your name.
I state my name.
Having been appointed to the office of...
Having been appointed to the office of...
Morgan County Commission at large, eh?
Morgan County Commission at large, eh?
You solemnly swear...
You solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this state...
And the Constitution of this state...
And that I will discharge the duties...
And I will discharge the duties...
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Well, you're stuck for another four years, Commissioner Wilson. Congratulations.
That's not an auspicious start.
I tried to bum out. That was for us today.
Yeah, right.
I'm sorry.
All right. Well, thank you for that. We will move to our work session item, which is Mr. John Barbert and Mr. James Ebert, Morgan County Economic Development Strategic Plan update.
Do you want us to scare? Where would you like this?
Yeah, come... Well, do we need to move?
What are you going to do?
Do you want us to come down and sit with you there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Oh, come on. These are softer seats.
These are softer seats, really.
Lots of them.
This is their plan to get us to...
Jeez.
Yeah. To go for new chairs. Thank you, because I've got a bad wheel. This whole standing would have caused me some re... Got a heel problem. Feels like a...
Did you say a bad wheel?
Wheel, wheel.
He won't heal, which is a heel?
Heel of my...
He won't heal. That's what he said.
He wanted me to play basketball, then I'm like, "Come on, play me basketball." Commissioner Fekro, where do you want us to start?
Start with...
So I think what I'd like to do is maybe just kind of start with our, kind of a report on our strategic plan that we, I think, went over in 2021. We made some updates, actually, 2020. We made some updates last year, 2021. At the beginning of it, there's a lot of statistics and information. Some of it is still really relevant, and some of it may be outdated a little bit, like our population. We will go through this and use some of the information, IBI, to update this. But just in conjunction with the recommendation or the direction that we get on strategic plan, we will work through that, purposes of economic planning and stuff like that, economic opportunities, and get all that updated. But just for purposes of reporting, so, under objectives, in our one-year plan from last year, under one, it was affordable housing, and to be honest with you, I think we are going to recommend that we move the affordable housing out of a one-year plan because it's going to be a long-term project into more of a five-year plan. IBI will have some affordable housing recommendations. Commissioner Robert has said several times that there needs to be a more dynamic approach to affordable housing. Needs to be mixed-use, and we need to understand that. And so I just think it's going to be a lot longer project than just one year. So we did move that out. Under current zoning...
So what have... What has been done?
Nothing.
Okay.
We, and that kind of goes into the next couple of them, which is, one of them is land use code, PRUDs or PADs. How do we encourage affordable housing? What does affordable housing look like in this community? And we haven't really established that, per se.
I know we did talk about ADUs with Josh also, so...
And so there are some strategies that I think we need to talk about when we talk about affordable housing, and that's not building affordable housing in clumps. That is sprinkling affordable housing out into more of a mixed-use so that we don't have a high-dense population of low-income housing, which usually causes you some public safety issues or other issues. But also, in concept, when you're trying to strengthen individuals that may be socially, economically challenged, you want to give them a more diverse population for them to social, build social networks with. And so those are some of the strategies we'll present as we kind of put together this affordable housing. The state also, to be honest with you, is going to come out, come forward with some affordable housing recommendations or requirements. And so in order to kind of meet those, we'll have, there'll be some things we specifically will have to do from a county perspective.
So they're gonna, the state's gonna have requirements?
Yes.
Because we're getting state dollars?
Nope.
Unfunded mandate.
At this point.
Generally, the state regulations thus far have just limited our ability to get funding in areas that we don't typically get funding if we don't have a block on transit and circles.
Right. And I think they've recognized it because a lot of counties, especially smaller counties, have not produced any type of real affordable housing plan because it has been around incentives, and usually incentives were, you know, some type of UDOT or mass transit. But I think it's got to the point where there's a feeling at the state level that they're gonna have to start mandating some things, and what that looks like, I don't really know. It could be fairly draconian to start with and may be tempered as the legislative session moves on, but that's what I've heard. So...
That may be something that we want to discuss with our legislative representatives just to make sure we understand that. And that they understand our perspective on it as well. I think a rural community has a very different perspective from some of the terminal areas.
Correct. But I also think that we can sprinkle in some of our development agreements and our RDA requirements or CRE requirements and affordable housing components. That if you're going to access these tip dollars or a PID component, that there's a requirement for this amount. Or if there's an alternative to that, in the past, they held out like a 10% for affordable housing. The problem with that is, you guys don't develop. So what do you do with that 10%, right? And so usually what happens, that 10% then goes into some type of ladder house, care facility out as county, but that doesn't really help your affordable housing, right? It does spend that money and may meet some type of state requirement, but it doesn't help. And the reality of it is, is we've got to produce affordable housing. And so how do we do that? So I think that's the big question that we're gonna have to tackle here in the next little while. So... I don't like answered questions with nothing, but that's the reality of it right now. So, okay. But we are in the process, under land use, of identifying codes and restrictive economic development, things that restrict our economic development goals. IBI will then, again, will be one of the tools that we're using to identify that and bring that forward.
I think what we need to do, though, James, is we're looking at the 2021 strategic plan and telling you what has been accomplished. You guys are looking at the red line.
Yeah, on what we're working on.
Yeah, that's what you have.
And I want, I want to end with that because some of these things I pulled out and/or moved. But again, we can move anything where, back into the one-year project that you want. The PAD/PRUDs, I think that's presently being reviewed at a... Are we reviewing that right now in Josh's office? It's kind of the feeling that I get. Yeah.
He has a draft that...
So I think we're just right around the corner from maybe having some headway on that, which will be huge for us. So again, under two, economic development awareness. This is more to do with the board oversight from the CED sub, CED boards. We have created both the development and the broadband committees, and they have made some headway on different things, including Liberty Broadband and some of the expansion they've had on a microwave system out to smaller or less serviced parts of the county. Contract economic development, professional funding, we're in the process where we're doing that, and that's why I'm here today. Creation of a county communication plan. I think that we've had several conversations. We've provoked, promoted it several different ways. I think it's come in front of the commission. I think that there's still some discussion on how we create a communication plan, what the value is or perceived value for the county from the commission's perspective, but we spent some time in working with some providers to give you some information on what that could look like. In context with that was, we did create a social media platform for community outreach, or we suggested one. We did have some dates and schedules for some of these things under Sections 2 and 3, but we just haven't adopted a provider for that. So I think that's something we can continue to look into this year. I do think communication and figuring out a way to communicate on a variety levels, both economic development, overarching community needs or community events that are coming out as something we had some time talking about, et cetera, so on. Under infrastructure, Mountain Green Full Interchange, we were successful in getting EIS dollars for that, and we'll continue the lobbying efforts into...
EA, EA?
EAS, yeah. We got moved to EAS, which we're very happy about. And we'll continue the lobbying efforts for programming dollars, moving into the future on that, and you have done some work on a lobbyist to continue finding the funding for that and securing that. The RPO, we started out at the very beginning. We made some adjustments to the RPO. We scaled it back just to Morgan, and so we have some suggestions on how to continue to move the RPO forward. Commercial and county property inventory list, which I think we'll talk about in the suggestions into this upcoming year. But that's an important component as we start to build out opportunities for economic development, having that available property and the usage of that property where it's zoned. And then, and then who the contacts are for that becomes very important. Broadband, high-speed internet, again, we are continuing to work on that. We've had some success on that. Moving on to business development, identify business opportunities. I think we've had a good program with our grant program. We've worked through the Business Resource Center to continue to build relationships with businesses and better identify if there are concerns or issues that they're having with their business, if there's challenges that they're having for expansion or for discontinuing to operate. Working a lot with Andrew and the VRC through that, and then...
Can we go back to broadband for a minute?
You betcha.
Because that's like a frustrating...
You bet.
Part there. You said we've had some success with that. It doesn't feel like we've had a ton of success for that, with that. Couldn't even get our internet to run at the fair this year again, which is a huge frustration for us. But it doesn't seem like we're making, I mean, they've come in and they promised us a lot of stuff, but I haven't seen a lot of it come to pass.
So I don't know who the provider is for the fairgrounds.
Liberty.
Yeah, so I know that we're working with Liberty, and Blain has had some conversations with them about a specific tower. I don't know if that's the same tower or not.
Yeah, it's not the same.
I don't think that the answer for the fairgrounds is the, is the microwave system. The answer for the fairgrounds is probably going to be running a fiber line to the fairgrounds. I know that All West had worked on running a line to the very edge of Morgan. So we probably need to have a specific conversation with the fairgrounds and maybe All West to see if we can get something that's connecting right to All West rather than...
Locally, I know they're coming, they were coming over in the Upper Valley and coming down the...
All West?
Yeah, whatever direction.
So All West...
Thank you.
Excuse me, did that grant with the state that we supported, and they got grant funding to do it?
For the Croydon area.
For the Croydon area. Right now, they have conduit from Summit County to the off-ramp here. But there's no line from the summit plant to here. And they have, they have access to put more conduit, clear down...
And they've already, and they've already ran it all the way to...
The conduits in.
The conduit all the way.
But the line, I don't think is in yet.
Correct.
Well, how are they servicing Los Hach Peaks? Because I think they got their contract to that.
I think they're coming up from the other way. Well, or maybe they intend to run down that...
They do. They're gonna run down the canyon.
They actually have gone all the way down the freeway system in the government.
Yeah, in the UDOT right of way.
UDOT right of way. They've already got line through there because Round Valley has it. Round Valley already has All West if they want it. And it's gone all the way down through, but nobody's requested any use of it except for WDR.
So according to Jack from All West...
There is, there is a line. There is a line.
They felt like they had an agreement with Morgan City, so they ran fiber almost all the way to Morgan City.
They felt like they had...
Well, they did.
I'm just telling, I don't, I don't know if there was a...
That was very hard tenure. They, they, we had an agreement, and then Ty went with Utopia.
So there may be in, for that particular, and here's, here's the issue, and I think that you hit it on, is that there's a lot of little issues and problems that aren't little to those who are dealing with them. And so there's very specific ways to resolve those specific issues. So the fairgrounds could maybe talk to the city and see if they could be included in the Utopia and just access Utopia, because Utopia runs to every single home. Or we could talk to Jack and see if there's a way to tap in to their closest line, which I think should be fairly close, to address that issue. In context of where we were two and a half, three years ago, we've made some headway. And what I mean by that is, like, we presently have an RFP/RFQ out right now for providers to give us a plan on how to provide countywide services on an open network.
So can I jump in on that real quick, please? In 2021, when we first got on board, there was Liberty, and then there was one other one.
BEHIVE.
BEHIVE. Is there any way we can get enough, both of them coming in and saying, "Okay, here's what we've done, and here's the area that can be serviced"? Is there, can we get any kind of update like that?
We had one six months ago.
Can we get any kind of update like that?
We can give it again anytime you want. Right now, I'm still not, I'm not happy with BEHIVE. Right now, I'm not happy with it.
Yeah, they were supposed to be done, well, two years ago, and then they said, "Okay, it'll be fall of 2022," and it's still not completed. That's, that's the stretch of line from the Y to...
Porterville.
To Porterville, to 66. Just keeps giving them money.
No, we don't give them any more money.
We gave them a bunch of money initially. From the CARES Act funding. No, it was federal funding, but, yeah, it was CARES.
But regardless, we, we didn't give them the money, and they didn't perform the work.
We gave them the money.
We gave them a check?
Oh, yeah.
And they haven't performed the work?
They haven't completed the work.
That's fine with me.
And maybe we need to push them on.
And the issue is, is we probably need to review that contract because the contract wasn't as strong.
It was a letter of understanding. It wasn't super strong. Part of the problem was we weren't following the timeline because we had to spend it by the end of December, and then a week before the deadline, the feds pushed it back another year. Had we known they were gonna do that, I think it would have been a very different...
Well, another thing that needs to be communicated, whether it's open architecture or closed.
It's, it's not open.
Whatever it is, bring him in there, and let's figure out where the 350 grand went.
No, it's more than that. It's, it's... Yeah, it's 600.
It's worse than you thought, Jared.
Because there was like 300,000 to go from Peterson to the Y, and then another 370,000 to go from there to 66.
And they did some work in that.
And, oh, yes, thank you. Wasn't the Highlands they did?
Yeah. I think that's been done. The actual things that they told me the last time I talked to them was that Mountain Green, there's very few people that have even subscribed to it once they got it in. There's one area that would have subscribed to it, but they stopped and would not go any further, which is a total of 14 more homes. They would stop and says, "What you can't do is $65,000. We're not gonna do it." So here, Liberty's been trying to get that to where they can. Los Hach Peaks doesn't want to work with them, so that's out. Right now, that's not even being done until next spring. T-Mobile is trying to work with us on that, trying to get them some internet connections there. As far as the other part that BEHIVE have done, they've got 95% or 96% of everybody covered in the Rollins Ranch and Convo's. They're not Convo's, but anyway.
BEHIVE or Liberty?
BEHIVE. BEHIVE. It's not your area though.
Anyways, I'd love to, I'd love to bring them in, Blain, and have them tell us the...
I can easily do that.
The last thing on, the issue that I think that we have to both of your points is, we, I think the county paid BEHIVE to run fiber along the road on poles with the option of running it to homes if the owners paid for it. And so they took the 600,000, they ran it all on poles. Doesn't look the best. I think we've been some concerned on some of the quality. But the issue we're having is that now there's fiber ran, but no one's accessing it because it costs them 15,000 or not from a pole to the house type of thing, right?
Well, part of our discussion was with them was that we were gonna subsidize that cost so that they didn't pass that big fee on.
And that's why that 650 was there. It was gonna cost them, what, 300?
$50,000 per household?
No, no, like, like 1500 or something. I don't know what the exact number is, but I know it's kind of pricey. The issue is, is that the model that we contracted them to provide a service probably wasn't the best model to actually get it into the homes. There's better models now. Far West where I live, they had a great model, and they ran it to your home, and yada, yada, yada. It worked really well. So moving into the future, that's why we have the RFQ out. We want them to propose a model that makes sense for us, instead of us trying to propose a model and missing certain components that doesn't allow it to be...
So there's a current RFQ out?
There is an RFQ out, and I don't really expect anything, a response, until we get some, the federal government to put some more dollars out. As soon as those dollars come out, then there's money to spend, and people are...
So does RFQ speak correctly to what's been done with Liberty and broadband, or Liberty and whoever the other, BEHIVE, or even...
So they...
I guess it sounds like we all need to get on the same page.
What you mean, speak correctly, because it's a request for them to propose a system that would be a countywide, open architecture system.
So we're not giving them requirements. We're saying, propose something for us that makes sense.
What I'm saying is, is we've already thrown $600,000 at whoever. They should have done something. What have they done? And does RFQ then add to that?
It doesn't. And the reason, and the reason...
It could, but...
Yeah, you're right.
But it doesn't necessarily.
So... If BEHIVE responds to RFQ, I would, I would guess they're going to include what they build out as part of that RFQ to provide countywide services. If All West responds to it, but if Utopia, other than maybe Morgan City, they, they don't have infrastructure in the county, so that they would be starting fresh. Does that make sense?
No, but I'll be interested.
If the two current providers on the two, All West and BEHIVE, were to respond, which is ultimately what you would hope for because they've already got structure. And then they're simply saying, "This is how we complete, and this is how, what we need in order for it to be an open architecture system."
And I guess the point I was making is that hopefully, these people that are bidding on RFQ would get qualified, well, if it's an RFQ, it's just qualifications, so I guess it doesn't matter. But they should be able, they should understand the backbone that's in place so they can say, "Here's what we'll do now."
Or they may just propose their own backboard. I don't think that makes a whole bunch of sense, but that's what these, these providers do that all the time. They'll lay cable on top of each other. They're not really open to open networks except for Utopia. So my guess would be, to be honest with you, Utopia will probably come up with the most comprehensive approach to it because it's their model. And if there's federal dollars out there, then they'll just build that in and build off the system that they have here in, in Morgan.
But they'll use the $600,000 backbone?
Probably not. And the reason is, is BEHIVE won't give them permission to.
Yeah. BEHIVE wants to charge, so might...
Well, they, they may or they may not.
Yeah.
I mean, they may come in and they may acquire you.
Yeah.
But they may say, "We're gonna overlay a new system, BEHIVE, unless you let us participate in yours, in which case we'll have to share."
Because it's not doing BEHIVE any good at this point.
Correct.
No, it's not.
But I think part of the reason they are not seeing a lot of subscribers is they haven't, they haven't advertised, that they haven't pushed it. They've, they've been very slow and reluctant to sign people up and to connect them.
So to your point, and not to belabor this too much, but to your point, in the RFP response, we would probably have a component of that, of it that says connectivity to households. So within this, build out a $10 million infrastructure, and then under subsection 6 is, how are you gonna connect to residents, and how many residents will you guarantee you connect to? And where will those residents be? Those would be some of the things we review as we look at their RFQ response.
I also think if, if we do end up with more federal dollars, we have learned some lessons through what we did, we would do very differently. The reason that we, that we subsidized the running of the line and not the last stretch to the home, which is what we probably should have subsidized, is because the CARES Act funding had to actually be spent and installed, not just, "Hey, we've got money sitting here waiting to be used for this." It had to actually be used for physical...
Which changed after the day, was it?
A week before the deadline, but that was too late for us to change.
I just really hope it was money well-spent or...
Well, it wasn't.
Could have just done it.
It wasn't, yeah. It wasn't well-spent because they, they didn't do the extra work to get it to the homes or do, in my opinion, a quality.
At the time, though, that the decision was made, the, the decision was, we either spend this money or we give it back to the federal government. So, and, and that was the best we could do, to spend it and have somebody that would actually use it. We went to, we went to four different companies. We went to All West, we went to BEHIVE, we went to Liberty, and we went to one other and said, "Give us your proposals." And, and we just looked and said, "How many households can we service with this? What's the biggest bank for our money?"
43.
And what would stretch out the biggest portion of the county? And that happened to be a portion of Mountain Green and Morgan Valley.
Well, and if I remember quickly, they made some assurances that I don't think, at the end of the day, they kind of hid, but they weren't in the contract. Yeah, so it's not...
I'm not trying to slow this process down.
Yeah, sorry.
I mean, it's a legitimate question.
No, it's a great discussion.
It's something we've struggled with, to be honest with you, because it's, it's not an easy bird to get in the cage, because they all do it differently.
It's not easy.
Yeah.
Talking to these different ones and saying, "What value is it for us?", even rising.
It doesn't make any sense for the... It doesn't make any sense for them to build in rural. There's not enough, it costs too much.
It costs too much to run between homes. 200 feet of frontage per home, and that's why Liberty was a good, yeah, Liberty was a good model, but then you have what happened.
Somebody clips a power pole and you're down for a day. So.
Although, clipping of the power pole takes out the fiber line, which supports the Liberty system, so it's, because I'm like, underground fiber exhaustion is the optimal solution.
Well, it is, but when you're, like, like he says, you're, you're 200 foot of frontage, nobody's going to want to do that.
In between homes that are a quarter mile away.
So I, I think Liberty was a viable option. It's just, it was a viable option at the time, and we just need to see if we can morph it into a viable option now, to get a Band-Aid on before we get more funds. Yeah, I do too.
I'm generally happy with it, but we had an outage over there on Sunday.
Well, and to that point, so we gave, we gave Beehive 600-some thousand dollars, and I think we gave Liberty 100,000 dollars. I mean, Liberty had a very small amount of money to try to build their whole system out, so. They are limited by some funding. They were hoping to get more subscribers and then use that to strengthen the, the towers, et cetera, so on, but it just, you know, it's a process.
Well, and they haven't, they haven't gone, they have not gone out and advertised it yet, except by word of mouth.
Because they're still trying to get it all.
Because they're trying to get it functional perfectly, and that's the point.
Plus, they need more employees, because they, they can't get it all done. But I think in the essence of time, we have probably ought to go through our proposals of.
So, really quickly, tourism, we did a lot of good stuff on tourism. We've now passed it on to, what's the company?
Vista Works.
Vista Works, and they're continuing to move forward on that, and they'll probably report here in the next couple of days. Um, so, I want to get to a point where we kind of get some direction from the commission, but I want to make sure that I'm on the right page, because as we're looking at developments and we're encouraging developers to come in, and really grow a community rather than just build stuff. I think some of the areas that we need to look at, as far as from a county perspective, is how this development helps, helps our housing quality and our mix. I think we need to look on how the developments help our economic stability, what they bring into the community, and are they a drain on the community, or are they actually helping to build out the community? Is there an education component? There's always, you know, if we have a large enough development come in, do we want to have conversations with, with them about charter homes or other educational opportunities they can help and provide for? Public health?
Charter schools, you mean?
Yes, you know, it's something to kind of think about. Taking a little bit of the weight off of our system right now, which heavily taxes through our property taxes, public health and medical services. Could they help with building out medical facilities? Could they help with our behavioral health component or our physical health component? Do they fit in the neighborhood and physical conditions? You know, things such as grocery stores, you know, walkable communities, parks, recreation, are they, are they building what you actually want and what the citizens want in your communities, and the social context? You know, do they, do they bring something positive to the community, and do they understand the community? So as an example, we've been having some conversations about what the golf course complex could look like, and how that may roll into Como Springs, and what it does with the water infrastructure that we have with the Weaver River, and what that looks like with the recreational facility directly adjacent to the fairgrounds. And if we were to look at that as a whole, even if it's pieces, you know, do we want to have a sports complex in there to help service community needs along with the recreational components? Do we want to develop stuff along the Weaver River and to make it more of a parkway complex? You know, ripen areas and, and helping with natural habitats? Does the county want to donate any of the recreational land into a, into a development that will help the development have more of a destination feel to it? In building a community, these are the things we'll probably need to have some conversations about. The county will probably need to help fund some of it to an extent, and whether that's through a GO bond, or through TIF financing, or through a PID. But conceptually, as, as these things coming from the commission, you want to think about the impacts. You know, we want to have a grocery store, so we say, okay, we need 500 homes, but what's the impact on the school system? What's the impact on the needs for, for physical health, medical, et cetera, so on? You know, what kind of community are you trying to build? Do we need to have an overlay for some walkable park areas? Those are the things we want to continue to think about as we move forward. So, those are just some of the things that go through my mind. There's a whole bunch more. You can work through some of that on development agreements, or you can have that a part of your RDA board requirements for any type of CRAs or PIDs. As an example, Snow Basin just passed basically, I think, two separate CRAs for their, for their facility with three PID overlays on them, on top of it. And that's how they're going to fund some of that, that huge infrastructure out there. And so we want to just kind of think about what, you know, and maybe that's something the commission comes to me and says, okay, in this three-mile area, or this five-mile area, we're going to have development, what do we want in this area? What do we want this, this development to look like? Do we need a Insta-Care in this facility? What does that look like? And we kind of have some of those thoughts before we have developers come in and say, I want to do an overlay on this with a CRA, right? And they give us their CRA overlay, and we say, well, our preference would be in order for us to do it at 70, 30, or go from 10 to 15 years, that you have this facility, this facility, this facility, and then see if they can work that into their proposal, or CRA proposal, or their development agreement. So those are things that we'd like to think about. Does that make sense? Did I talk too quick and talk about nothing, or?
Well, there's just, I have some stuff that I want to ask. So, here's what I would, since we come back to the contract every year, and I always feel like, like voting on something that I don't understand exactly what Beaver Solution, I know it's like advertising, but it concerns me, you know? I just want to say, what has Beaver Solution of these things?
What have we done?
I mean, because you, the reports we get, you know, we give you a half hour, you come in and you blast us with stuff, and, and I know stuff, some of that stuff we're working on, you're working on, whoever's working on. I want to say, if, if I was coming to you and saying, Wilson Paint can bring this to the table, I want to hear what you feel like, the context you have, the people you bring into the table and stuff like that, that help us say, okay, this is worth spending the money. Because I know you don't want to get paid for nothing, you've said that.
Yeah. So I think, so for me, I think it's a conversation we've had several times, is there are certain things that I can do until I get to a certain point. Like, I think that we need to have, and I hope IVI will make some recommendations, that we then can work with planning or other departments to implement, right? But, like the PAD. So, we need a PAD for a lot of these developments, because the PAD is what makes that development actually pencil. Or we have to have a CRA overlay with some type of tax increment for a period of time to make that pencil. Or we need to change some land use in this area of the county, so that they can have a mixed-use residential slash CR1 zone, or whichever zone, which, commercial zone, that they, they can do an overlay, right? But I can't change that. That has to come. So I, I can make recommendations, and so a lot of the stuff I'm working on right now is recommendations, and here's, here's where we need to be. But how long have we been sitting on the PAD?
Well, at least.
Well, and the CRA.
Yeah, and so.
The CRA is already done on Mountain Green.
Yeah, I mean, it's been established. There are no specific CRA proposals.
Yeah, right. So we have, we have, so again, what I'm coming back to is the challenge that I have is like, we have a CRA area designation, and it's been designated by resolution, but it doesn't have a tax increment attached to it, it doesn't have a year attached to it. The CRA needs to have some specific requirements on what the CRA is actually funding, right? All we've done is said, all that has happened is the CRA got together and said, here is where I want to have this project area, right? So we have to come back and overlay, in my opinion, I think we need to dissolve the, the overlay and start with another one, and then really line out what's going, what's going to be in it, percentages of houses versus commercial. So there's all that work still to do, right? But we've got to have a CRA meeting to start to establish that. I need to get with Garrett, and we, Garrett and I have got to go over where we're at on the CRAs, and, and what's out there, and what isn't out there, and then what's legal for us to move forward on, and we need to have a meeting and start that whole process.
So you're saying that in some of this stuff, we're slowing you down?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to say that, because I've been on the other side of the table, right? And, and, and there's a process involved with that, and you had some issues with planning, and you've had to, you know, bring a new planner in and start that process. But what I'd say is, we've had some great conversations about CRAs. I've reached out to several developers on specific CRAs and PIDs, and said, listen, you need to start putting those together, because at some point, we're going to have an RDA meeting, and then once we have that RDA meeting, that'll be time for you to submit your CRA proposals. But don't create a CRA proposal until I can tell you where the commissioners are going, or the RDA board slash commissioners are going to land on what numbers they feel comfortable, because if you come back and say, listen, I'm not going to do any CRAs over 10 years, no matter what they are, or I'll do a CRA under 10 years, if it's going to be a $180 million project, maybe we'll go to 15, and we will never go above 50%, or we'll only go above 50% if it's a $200 million, you know, project, then I can give them some of the parameters of that, so they can, and do a CRA proposal. CRA proposal is probably, probably cost them between 20 and 50 million, 50 million, 20 and 50,000 dollars, depending on who they have do it, or maybe 7 to 10 million if it's a smaller project, because they have to do all the, all the, you know, they have to run it through their finance people, get it all figured out. So, so specific to, you know, like the CRAs and RDAs, there's just a process, we've got to get to that point, we just haven't had any of those meetings yet, right? So, what I would say to you, specifically to me, is I've had great conversations with Roland Gardner on Gardner Development. He's been working with Dwayne to try to get them to a point where he's ready to move forward on that. They've invested money in, in running water already to the project and getting that started. I think we talked to him for a while about getting Lee's up and running. I think Lee's is in planning right now, starting to move forward, so that's been a positive. The project area right next to it is a gentleman by the name of Dave Chubb just bought from Dwayne, and he's in the process, it's in planning right now. He wants to put a business right there, and, and I think the business is, makes sense for the use of that property. We, I talked to him about getting that in an RDA and what that would look like, and when he gets to that point, he's probably going to have another conversation with me on that. So, in the area of RDA and development, we've had all those conversations. We've had some huge conversations over at the golf course, what that looks like. We put two different developers in contact with the present developer to see if they're interested in buying it. I think that there's a lot of energy behind that, if they can get to a good price, and I think that project is more conducive to the plan. I think the county commission would be interested in making that more of a destination rather than a housing development. But, to the context of the conversation I had just a second ago, there's going to be, county needs to come to the table about what that looks like. Is the county, you know, willing to do some things as far as tax increment financing, PIDs, and is the county interested in putting a facility on that piece of property that would bring more people to it, like a rec center or something like that? So we're in those conversations. The Como Springs has kind of died out. I think Grant, I think the bridge kind of killed that project for now, for sure, and Grant's looking for some funding for a bridge, but I just don't, I can't find any funding until they pass the next infrastructure bill. I haven't really seen any funding on that, for sure. So, you know, in the context of, of those projects, I think they continue to move forward. Working with smaller businesses, I think we work directly with BRC in starting our grant project program. I hope they're going to come and do a report on that. Successes or failures. Now, some of it, because they got money late in the year, they haven't been able to implement all of it, even though they did some build out, but I, my guess is that those, those grants are going to be successful, because those businesses will continue to grow. So I think there's some value there.
So, question back to Matt. Matt asked a question. Are we holding up economic development? As a commission and within our policies, are we holding it up?
So I would say that, there isn't a efficient process for economic development. There's not an efficient process within, within, I don't want to say planning, because I don't want to throw any shade at Josh at all, but it's a slow process. It's convoluted by years of policies that were anti-growth, or just policies that eliminated growth opportunities. Your land use code doesn't allow a lot of usage in areas that are prime for commercial growth. We have a large property owner in Peterson who'd love to do something, but none of his land use will allow him to do it. So there'll be some recommendations from IVI. It's a very slow process, because there's not a central point for decision-making. Does that make sense? And so, who is actually, so the biggest issue to Jared's conversation with Beehive is there's no project manager. So there's not one person in the county that's calling Beehive up and saying, it's Thursday, you told me this. It's now two weeks, your deadline is here. And you have that across, I think, a lot of your decision-making within the county, just to be honest with you, because there's no one project manager slash manager that's following every single thing as it goes through. Garrett, and I could be wrong, but I think Garrett becomes your go-to guy on everything, where people are not sure what to do, so they ask, go ask Garrett, is this legal or is this not legal, right? So he becomes effectively the person everybody kind of leans on, but that's not Garrett's job. He's not, I don't believe he should have to be your project manager for everything. If one person's having an issue, or something's not getting done, who do they go to? So I think that's, from an efficiency view, there's a little bit of an issue with that. Imagine running your businesses with no manager. So during the day, all your cashiers just kind of do whatever they want all day long. No one's doing your scheduling, no one is making decisions on, on inventory processes and things like that. And it's kind of left to who, who's ever there for the day. So, so that is a little bit of an issue. When I talk to businesses, that's some of the issues that they have. Like, if there's an issue and or a problem, who do they go to? So they go to Ty in Morgan City, right, and Ty becomes a central decision-maker and all of that. Now, you can't do that, but that is a little bit of an issue. If I have a question about something within the county, I call Josh. It may not be Josh's role or responsibility to have to handle that, or call Garrett. Just as a quick example, so you have a contract that comes in front of the commission, it's not adopted in whole, there's some changes made to it, it's adopted with changes. Where's that contract go? Because I've had three contracts that that's happened to, and then they, people have called me three weeks later and said, where's my contract at? And I call up, and no one was in charge of making the changes to that contract, getting it to Garrett, because it's not Garrett's job to go and change contracts, right? And then getting that contract out to wherever it goes to get disseminated. So just as an example. So, I don't want to, I'm not casting a stone, just to ask me a very specific question.
I'm flipping it, I'm flipping it, and maybe, maybe that's where Matt was going, I'm not sure. I, I guess the thought I have is, because it's so untangible, it's really hard to understand exactly what you do, and I think we need to know better what you do. And I don't know if it's a, I don't know if it's an update from Blaine every two weeks, or just a letter from you that's kind of regurgitating some of this stuff, well, I've talked to this, I've talked to this. I know, I, I do it for a living third-party consultant. I have to track every, I guess, Robert might be worse, but mine's every 15 minutes at a minimum, every six.
Yeah, six, that's a chargeable hours.
So, every 15 minutes at a minimum, I have to say, this is what I'm doing on your project. I, I build 30 minutes today, I build two and a half hours today. You're not, your salary, you're not hourly.
Yeah, love to do that, yeah.
But at the same time, I don't know if we could, because if we had somebody in-house, that would be the expectation, is what are, what are you spending your time on? I don't think we want to, you obviously are doing a great job for us, but I think we need to understand that better than, than what we're understanding, and I think that would help with some of the questions that might be coming up.
So that's part of, so I'll just talk about that. So we, so, to the thing I just talked about, we've been talking about a CRM for how long?
A what?
Client Relationship Management Tool, basically what.
Today?
Yeah, basically what Jared's talking about. How long have we talked about a CRM?
It's been quite a while.
Eight months?
Yeah, it's been quite a while.
So which goes back to the issue. I expressed this very specific concern. Blaine expressed the concern that if I was to leave, then everything I've been doing is lost, right? Because we're not.
I agree with that, too.
And so, we talked about it, but we never made a decision on it, never, never, never. We brought it in front, we brought it in front, we brought it in front, right? Do we have, do we have the contract yet? Did Mauricio send you a contract?
We've got one for the CEO, but it's not been finished yet, not been finalized.
Yeah, so. So again, that kind of goes back to, I would love to have a CRM where every day, when I do something, I put it in, right? Every one of you has access to it, you can pop in and see what was done, you can pop in to see what businesses we're talking to, you can pop in to see where something is and, you know, that we've talked about last week or two weeks ago. Yeah, that would be awesome, and I would, I would love to do that. To Jared's point, it's kind of nebulous because we spent a lot of time talking, but, but $5 million, $10 million, $20, $50 million projects take time, right? They take a lot of, of management, because there's a lot of pieces to the projects moving forward. But what I've told, and when I continue to tell Blaine, is that we've got a whole infrastructure to build out. Like unlike, unlike like larger counties that have a very efficient process, our process still has not been addressed two years running. We still have not addressed our process for development. In fact, I lost one of our major board members because he just got frustrated and tired because we weren't, we never addressed any of the process.
On what board?
Our C D, yeah. So.
Actually, we lost two.
So hopefully, what you'll see with the IVI report, which is a couple of months out still, is some very firm recommendations on what we can do to become more efficient, and then we can start hopefully taking some of those recommendations, making those land use, because how hard is it to sell paint when you don't have paint?
Impossible.
It's impossible.
Why did you use the paint scenario?
Because I tried to buy paint the other day, and they didn't have any paint, like two months ago.
Must have been once.
Well, there's been, there's been a number of things that, that if you look at the 2021, and we probably should have put this in your packet. But if you look at the 2021 strategic plan to what we've got on a 2023 strategic plan, it's been fine-tuned and a number of things have dropped off just because of what James has done, and in some essence, it's some of the CEO board members have done. So I guess in the essence of time, and to answer you guys' questions, is if, if we look at some of the things we recommended and dropped off of this list, and now we're back to this list, what we're looking at is a CRA, a PRUD.
So the first thing on your, the first thing on your list right here, objectives, is a CRM, to Jared's point, is getting the CRM, getting the software purchased, getting the training, and getting the data input in, that's the very first thing. But I want to go back to something I just said. When I look at the information, IVI sent us some preliminary information on commercial real estate. So commercial real estate square feet in millions, Summit County has seven million square feet, Wasatch has 2.26 million feet, Morgan has .47. It's difficult to sell product when you don't have product to sell, and that's.
But that's real. Is that product in use, or is that product?
So, I don't know, because I haven't got, I can't jump into that this, but my guess would be it's in use, because the next graph has to do with employees per square foot, right? But what I would say to you is that, that's probably a reflection that there's not a whole bunch of available square footage to continue to build into right now. And so the recommendations from IVI will be to probably have some land use that will allow for some more commercial land to become available, or at least be zoned for some of that usage, because I know, what is his name, Ian Peterson, I love him to death.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, he, he has all kinds of properties.
Whittier.
Yeah, Whittier, Ron Whittier, that he wants to.
Did you say you love Ron Whittier to death?
Yeah, well, he's nice to me. I don't know if he's not nice to you, but he's nice to me. Yeah, I don't have any problem with him.
He's weird.
No, he swears at me, too, but I just, it don't matter to me, I don't care, so.
Well, I think, I think that becomes, becomes the issue, is we need some kind of centralized guy that's going to follow through with all this stuff.
So I guess my question to you would be that, of what we're paying you, what kind of time are we giving from you? And are, and are we being, is it, is it fair? Do you feel like it's fair what we're getting, what we're paying you?
So I feel overpaid sometimes in the sense that there's only so much I can do, because I run into, I've got a laundry list of things that I'm waiting for some direction on, or something to get approved. I've got people who call me at least once a week about the PAD, because they're ready to develop, but there's no PAD property. There's no PAD, so that they can't really build something like that out, and I love the PAD because it's so flexible and it's really in what you want. There's plenty of work to do, there's tremendous amounts of work to do. There is some frustration that, okay, you all run your own businesses, you all make your own decisions, I don't get to make any decisions, okay? And so the frustrating point I have is I'm ready to pull the trigger on a bunch of different things, but I can't because that's not my role and responsibility, and I can't go in, like my other job, and ring the bell and say, okay, let's, we've got to get this done. Because I can't, ring the bell around here means nothing to nobody, and all I become is, is a squawker in people's ear and a complainer because I need this done, I need this done, I need this done. We've got to change attitudes, we've got to do this, and they don't want to hear that from me, that's not my role and responsibility. So in the context of what I can accomplish, it runs into a baton handoff to somebody else sometimes, and I can't go to Rulon and say, Rulon, you've got to have, this is unacceptable, okay? You cannot build, you cannot tell the county you're going to build this, and then you build that. That doesn't work, that's not how it's going to work, because that's not my role and responsibility. So that, in the context of what you're saying, that's my only frustration from, from moving things forward, and I am not throwing anybody under the bus, and so I'm careful about how I say things, but a lot of times, I can't move forward on certain things and/or projects because, because of the structure of it. So I can't give you a straight answer, because sometimes I think I'm earning all kinds of, it's all working out great, this project's moving forward, this project's moving forward, then sometimes I'm just kind of waiting, trying to figure out the next thing to do because there's no, there's no property, there's no water, there's no infrastructure, or I've got to get something zoned, and we're waiting on IVI. So if you were to ask me, is there 80, 60 hours a work week on this? Of course there is, if you can figure out how to get the 60 hours to occur. So that's, that's how I'll answer that. And I don't know if that makes sense to you.
We're down to two minutes here. So if there's anything else you want to cover?
So here's, here's the quick things. I'd like you to read through this. If there's something that you want to add to this, or something you want to move, everything in red are changes that we've made, and we've made for a very specific reason. We would like to, we would like to make whatever changes you want in this. This becomes, not contractually, but this becomes a focus for next year for your economic development professional.
James, can you send us that PDF?
Oh, I thought we did.
You did, but it was scanned in?
Oh.
If you want to send it electronically, we can see exactly what we're going to be talking about.
Okay.
I will do that, too. Apologize.
Has this been reviewed by the, by the board already?
Yeah.
They're reviewing it tomorrow.
We wanted, we wanted to get some of your input, but we ran out of time.
The CEO board is static on how many things we've dropped on to, dropped off of this, but, you know, moved the accomplishments and changes made here.
So to that point, maybe send us both of these.
Yeah, you need to see a poll, and we apologize for that.
Anything else before we move into our review?
January, February, March, IVI will have something to us in the middle of January, something to us in the middle of February, and then the report in March. They were supposed to be in December, but one of their main players had an aneurysm and it's been out for about six months. So they are the contracted group doing the study on the recommendations for the small area market studies for both Peterson and Mountain Green, and they're going to come with recommendations for everything from infrastructure to land use to market availability, et cetera, so on.
Lots of studies, yeah.
Well, hopefully, this, this study comes with good recommendations, that's what I'm hoping for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't get your chair up under your.
I feel bad, you're, thank you.
Only got one. I don't think that's ADA approved.
Hey, I have my rant. I can, I can, I could go to the restroom in this chair.
I could. There you go.
Twenty bucks. See that?
Call a time and see Matt wheel out his office chair.
I have to give you 10 minutes instead of five for that one. But going down the ramp is the easy part, it's getting back up.
Oh, thank you, Julie. I didn't realize it had gotten put in there. All right, welcome to Morgan County Commission Meeting, January 3, 2023. We just finished a work session discussing economic development. We will begin with an invocation or moment of reflection, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked Commissioner Anderson to take care of that.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for this beautiful beginning of the year, grateful for the opportunity we have to meet today. We're grateful for the moisture that we've received over this weekend, the moisture that we greatly need, and we're very grateful for that, we're grateful for our health, we're grateful for the first responders, those that serve us and are ready to serve and ready to give their lives for us, we're grateful for our freedom, grateful for those who have made sacrifices and even the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. We're grateful for our blessings we have, our health and everything that we're blessed with daily, grateful for where we live, grateful for this county, the residents of this county, and ask that we do our best to manage as best as we can, and we sing these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please arise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Anderson. Being the first meeting of 2023, we have a couple of items to take care of here. First item is selection of Morgan County Commission Chair and Vice Chair for 2023, and the next item will be to review and discuss our portfolio assignments for 2023. So with that, we will open nominations for Morgan County Commission Chair.
Well, I would, I would nominate Mike that you do it as you're like Robert did. I think that's a, you've done a great job, and so I don't see a reason to change unless somebody else has a different nomination they'd like to put forward.
Does it need a second? Yes, well, I don't think you have to have seconds on nominations, no, we just leave it open to nominations and then we vote on them, so, no. Any other nominations? Okay, with that, we will vote on the 2022 Morgan County Commission Chair, have been nominated to continue in that role.
2023.
Sorry, 2023, thank you. I still used to say in 2022, it's hard to get used to it. Okay, so we'll look for a motion on that item, I guess.
I move that we reappoint Mike Newton as the County Commission Chair for the year 2023.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. We will now open nominations for the 2023 Morgan County Commission Vice Chair.
Well, I, I think, I don't want to be the only one speaking here, but.
You are.
I mean, I think Blaine's expressed an interest in, in being in the leadership, so I'd nominate Blaine to be in the leadership of the.
Okay, we have a nomination. Vice Chair, Commissioner Fackrell. Any other nominations?
Do I have to move seats?
Yeah, you got to move seats.
No, I can't do it.
Well, that's off the board.
It's a nomination.
I don't know why I can't do it from here.
I guess you can do it from there, you just, you just change seats if you need to.
Be a chair.
To be the chair, that's fine with me, too, that's what you want to do. I don't think there's a, there's probably a custom of where you sit, but there's no hard, fast rule by any means. Okay, any other nominations? All right, we'll close the nominations, and we'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we select, I guess, yeah, selection, select Commissioner Blaine Fackrell as Vice Chair for the year 2023.
Second.
Okay, we motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Fackrell. Okay, let's talk about portfolio assignments for 2023. You have in your packets the portfolio assignments from 2022 and 2021, just for information purposes, there weren't a lot of changes between '21 and '22. I guess there's a couple of ways we could approach this, we can go one by one, we could also just look for consent on where you're at, if there's anybody that has any particular assignments you'd like to change or, or be involved with, or no longer be involved with, and go through that as well.
I would like to know whether or not these portfolios, these were set up many, many years ago, what is, do they need to be a portfolio, or can they be combined with other portfolios, such as, for instance, impact fees ought to be in planning, which Robert's over now, and, and then the Weaver Morgan Health, and you've got the community services and health services, why not have that all under one portfolio? Or the historical society and the library be under the same portfolio? And just combine in a few of them and make it then to where, as the email I sent to everybody, maybe we ought to have two commissioners be on every single portfolio assignment, and that way, if one person cannot be there, that the alternate could go, or to be there for any kind of meetings, or board meetings, advisory meetings, or those kinds of things. And sorry, my voice is not good tonight.
I think in answer to your first question, we could certainly change or combine any of these, or, or separate if there was a need for that as well. There are some of these that are, that portfolio assignment means membership on a separate board, for example, the WFRC items, Wasatch Integrated Waste, there's a few, the Health Board, that's a board position. Some of those ask us for an alternate and others do not, so I don't know that we can necessarily say there's definitely an alternate on certain ones if they're a board member.
So if they, if a board member can't be present, they can't send the other person to vote?
Yeah, like on the YCC, for example.
They only want one board.
Yeah, there's just one board member, so if I can't be there, then it's out.
Wasatch Integrated is the same way. Now, UAC, or, sorry, not UAC, WFRC is a little different because they actually asked for an alternate, and, and the alternate is, is able to act.
I know Weaver, Weaver Human, he said when he was here that they would like to have two of us on, on there, and I'm fine with, if there's something that I have singly, I'm more happy to have help, I don't, it doesn't bother me at all.
I will say, I think some of these, it's definitely good to have a couple of commissioners, others is probably not necessary, and there may be some situations where it's detrimental, to be honest, because then you've got two different people giving direction, but I, you know, where they've specifically asked for it, I think that makes sense to add, you know? That's my thought.
Is there some, what, what other ones are there that? Is there some, what other ones are there that are single on there?
Maybe you've got yours purchasing.
I mean, really, most of them are just one. So, the other, the other thing that I, that I keep coming back to on portfolio assignments is I feel like we can't all do everything well, and we have to focus in certain areas, otherwise you end up spread too thin, you know, I mean, I don't know that I have the time or the, or the resources to attend another half a dozen meetings.
I agree.
Every month or every couple of weeks, so that's my only concern with that, you know, on every item, but I, I'm okay adding on some of them, and I would say particularly if you have an item or a portfolio assignment now and you feel like you could use some backup.
Well, I know, I know Blaine has a assumed desire to be on a couple of them, and I'm fine with that, I don't, I don't have a desire to be on anymore, to tell you the truth.
My only concern is, is like JPAC, I would like to be the alternate on that if Jared cannot be there, okay?
Do you, do you want to be the main guy on that and I'll be the alternate?
No, I, well, I can, if you want, but I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Because I'd be fine if you wanted to be the main.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of principal on a lot of them, and.
What one are you talking about?
JPAC.
The WFRC.
WFRC JPAC. I was on it, and then they did nothing for a year, now this year they have done something in 2022, and I've been to all of them, and so I just thought, if you can't be there, then at least call me and let me know, so that I can make sure I'm there.
Why don't we just make Blaine the alternate on that?
Sure.
I think, so you mentioned planning and the impact fee.
Right.
They could be combined.
Right, is what I'm saying.
Effectively, there's only one.
Right.
The same, I'm, do both.
Oh, you have both, okay.
Whether they're, it's, and I'm assuming we're going to keep that the same.
Yeah, I was just saying, okay, why do we have a portfolio that is actually in reality already you're doing it? I mean, for instance, that one.
I think sometimes it's helpful to look at the list and say, I'm responsible for this item and that item, it may be helpful to be able to look at it, particularly if you're a new commissioner coming in, and none of us are at this point, but if you were.
What do you mean, brand new?
As of this morning. In terms of impact fees, we have them, but we haven't done an impact fee study in a long, long time, but we would need to budget an impact fee study if we want to do that, and if that's something that you want me to try to get ready to do in 2024, then let me know, because, but, but if I do that, then we're going to increase the budget to address an impact fee study, so. Over time, that would probably pay itself back, but.
And another one is the East Canyon Water Quality Advisory Board and Lost Creek, you know, what do we do on those things? I have tried, there is no advisory board, and I have not started one for the water quality.
So Lost Creek, the work that I've done has been related to the, it's actually mostly with Public Works because we handle, or have handled, the, the operation of the facility there, now that's being handed over to State Parks, so that may change, you know, it's been, since State Parks has announced that project, it's been just coordinating with them and talking with them on their progress on that.
Okay, but I mean, I'm.
I think some of those do make sense, just given where we live in the county, I mean, it makes sense for you to work with the East Canyon Water because you live there.
That's right.
Makes sense for me to deal with.
Lost Creek, because you live there, right. And, you know, so I'm just, I'm just kind of curious, workforce services, you know, that's all, we have a member of the Economic Development Board that is from workforce services, I mean, not Development Board, the Opportunity Board, and he's there at our meetings and gives us an update on workforce services, so I don't know what we do with that, that's just another portfolio, I'm just wondering, okay, do we do anything with it? I mean, I don't do anything with American Lands except have them call me.
Which, in some cases, that's all the portfolio assignment is.
That's why I'm just wondering why we have it.
For the, for the commission.
We have it because we have no other manager or.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
You're absolutely right.
Anyway, I propose, I propose that we put library and history together, under two, two of you.
They're two separate.
So you have library, historical society.
Are they two separate boards on this one?
They're two separate boards. They are, so I don't know that combining them.
Well, I'm just thinking, I'm just, because the Historical Society is under and funded by the library, so that's why I'm saying, put those two together.
It is, but, I mean, Parks and, and Public Works are under the same two, and we have different commissioners on those, so I don't, or they have to be together, I guess.
And then we have recreation.
I see benefit to having multiple commissioners, especially because there's two different boards, but that's me.
And also, I see recreation as a portfolio, what kind of recreation is that? Because I'm dealing with a whole lot of recreation in my other portfolio assignments here, should we be separating that out between sports and outdoor rec?
Yeah, this was your comment a few months ago on the definition of a recreation director or sports director, right?
Yes, that's right.
I mean, I suppose you could call it.
I think the intent, the intent has been sports for a while slash recreation, but now we're making it more confusing, so I don't know what to do, but.
We could add a portfolio assignment of outdoor recreation and tourism.
Or just combine it with tourism, and then just have that sports recreation.
I don't think.
I think tourism, I think that's actually way too big.
Completely different.
Two different things.
No, because that's what I'm doing, outdoor rec is tourism.
No, when we see.
Soccer?
When we, outdoor rec, when we see recreation on the portfolio, my understanding is, is when a group of children, if you want to say that, or youth, parents pay for fees for them to participate in a sport.
Right.
Period.
I was suggesting that we have like sports recreation, if you want to call it that.
Versus that.
And then if he wants to add outdoor recreation to tourism.
Yeah, you can, you can add whatever you want to to tourism.
Okay.
Call it.
I agree, throw in there active transportation, throw, yeah.
Well, because that's what it all is, is outdoor recreation, is all of those things, and sports, I'd just like to see it specified as when you say recreation is sports, or is it outdoor rec, or is it trails, or is it what? So I'm just trying to define what it is you guys want done.
Maybe we need definitions from our attorney of each of these portfolio assignments.
I think that's a legal issue.
Okay, so let's, let's go through, Julie, and make sure you've got notes of where I think we're headed with some of these. On the WFRC JPAC, which is towards the bottom of the list there, right now we have Commissioner Anderson, we are going to move him to Commissioner Anderson as the main, and Commissioner Fackrell as the alternate. We talked about under recreation, updating that to. Sports recreation, is that what we're calling it?
Sports recreation is fine, I think that's.
Whatever you want.
That's what I would like.
Okay, call that sports recreation. Under tourism, we're going to put tourism slash outdoor recreation. Did I capture everything that we just talked about?
And the Historical Society.
We're not combining that.
And the Morgan Weaver Health, and the Community Services, Human Health, are we going to combine that? I mean, does he match your own one and Jared your other one?
They're different boards, aren't they?
Are they different boards?
The Health Department versus Human Services, those are two different organizations.
Right, same, same thing with the Historical Society and Library, they're both different.
I think those should be left alone. And that's right, they did request that, so, that's something we probably ought to talk about, is there a commissioner that would like to.
I don't. I don't want to do anything with it, sorry, I've got too many on my plate, and I got called out on it.
I think that's why we only had one last time.
I think it is, too.
I mean, it's not like you, there isn't like.
Does it need to be another commissioner, or can it be another volunteer from the community?
Can be another volunteer.
That's a good question, I don't know.
Wasn't it, Matt, didn't they say they wanted somebody either, either or?
I can ask him, I'm talking to him.
I think, I mean, there's lots of great people in the community that we might be able to, if, if the need is to help fill out the board from another person from Morgan County, then let's respond with another person.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I like that idea.
There's expertise in the community that we don't have, too. Okay, any others that?
And you're adding impact fees to them?
No. No.
Just leave them separate, but it makes sense to have the same commissioner in both, but it doesn't necessarily mean.
Yeah, because he's over both, so it doesn't matter, just keep the same. And Envision Utah would be the same thing, wouldn't it? Part of planning.
They're related, yeah.
Yeah, they haven't really done anything, at least.
Other than we attended something with them.
They're, yeah, that event, but they, they're doing a lot. Do you want that?
I already have it.
Oh, I was gonna say, I think it has Mike's.
It has Mike's name on it, so.
Yeah, you can keep it. I don't want anything more.
I'm fine with that.
So are you leaving everybody?
We're leaving everything else the same. Any objections, any other comments?
I thought Jared wanted something different.
I didn't know if you had interest in the Weaver Morgan Health Department or not, but if you didn't, then I was going to continue.
I don't, no.
Has Jan Ferris been replaced on there, I'm sure he has.
That was in 2020.
Yeah, it was 2021, so I just wanted to make sure Jan's.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's not, he's not on the 22 list. Okay. All right, with that, we'll look for a motion to approve the amendments to the 2022 portfolio assignments.
2023.
2023, I'm reading 2022 here, it's 2023 portfolio assignments, you're gonna have to remind me of this probably six more times, Julie.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2023 portfolio assignments as discussed and modified.
Second.
Motion a second to approve as modified, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Julie, will you get those updates made to the list and then email that out to everyone, the Morgan all, email, if you will? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving to consent items, the December 20th, 2022 meeting minutes, has everyone had a chance to review those minutes, and are there any updates that have not already been provided to you? I didn't have any updates to it, anyone else?
Can I ask a question for the county resident? Are you happy to say Commissioner Trump will call, or Commissioner Robert will call?
Just Commissioner, I think just the Commissioner and last name, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we had commissioners with the same last name, it might make sense, but otherwise, thank you. Oh, I did have one, we've got a Commissioner Anderson with an O in. Okay, with that, we'll look for a motion to approve the December 20th, 2022 meeting minutes.
I move to approve the December 20th, 2022 meeting minutes as, as corrected, yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the minutes, the minutes as corrected, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, the next item is filling out and signing our annual conflict of interest disclosure form, so just for public's knowledge, each year, the commissioners will update and sign a conflict of interest disclosure form, just lists any businesses or entities that we may be affiliated with, that could or may or may not have any conflict of interest with county business, so we fill those out, those get filed with the clerk, and then of course, during our meetings, we do declare any conflicts of interest as well.
And Garrett, can we have you notarizing?
Yes.
So, let's, do you want to take a minute to fill that out now, or do you want to wait and we can do that at the end and hand them over to him? I don't know, but there's nothing to vote on here, it's just handing these in.
I thought he gets it done, I filled mine out.
Okay, we'll, we'll get those filled out and to Garrett by the end of the meeting here, signatures. Okay, item C, Commissioners' declarations of conflict of interest with any items on this evening's agenda. Okay, seeing none, we will move to our public comment period, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission regarding any items on our agenda or otherwise, we do have one public hearing scheduled, which will occur later on in the meeting, and that is regarding the fee schedule, so if you'd like to address this regarding the fee schedule, there will be an opportunity for that, otherwise, now is your time to address the commission, if you have anything you'd like to say. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item E, which is a presentation from the Human Resources Department, Julie, take it away.
Thank you, I just wanted to do a couple of updates, now that I've been here a full year, I hit my year mark on December 21st, and I just wanted to just share a little bit of information with the rise. Number one, the first thing in the packet that I gave you guys is the workers' comp thing, I had a meeting with our workers' comp guy, and he basically shared with me, you know, a year analysis, but also the fact that we pay 6.9% higher than the average company pays due to injuries, and if you look at the paperwork that he provided, there's not that many injuries, and so it's interesting that we're penalized just for the few injuries that we have had. So, his recommendation, and if you would like me to do this, I can get together some training opportunities where he can try to help, the, and they do, they come for free and they just, you know, try to train, or they could train the heads of departments then, that can then train their guys. It's mostly in Public Works that some of the accidents happen, and so we could just have that focus be trying to get them, you know, a little bit of training opportunities. I don't know if we can ever really see it go away, but we are paying almost 7% higher than the average for our workers' comp because of the injuries that are reported, and I did find out that the best thing I can do is have everyone that gets injured come in and report, if they're not going to go to the doctor, I don't report it to workers' comp, if they are and there's going to be a medical bill involved, then I report it. That way, we don't have dings on our workers' comp, but we have the proof of the injury when it happened, I kind of keep track of it, and then I find out if they end up going to the doctor or not. So that's, going forward, that's what I'd like to do with your support, I have had that incident already happen, one individual fell on ice up at one of the sites, and he, he just came in and reported, and I said, thank you, because that's what you should do, and then he said, I just want to wait and see if I'm going to be okay, and then he never did go to the doctor, so I didn't report it, but I have it on file, that I have it. So, if there's, if you see anything wrong with that, Garrett, let me know, but that's the advice I was given, and it worked well with this last incident, and I didn't report it. They also said that I can report, but for information only, and then if there's not going to be any medical bills, that way that's tracked through the system, but we're not deemed and penalized for that, right? So there's.
Julie, you mentioned that a lot were Public Works, but it actually looks like most of these are police officers or first responders.
Yes, thank you, sorry, yeah, definitely more of that, so, yeah, so we, those are the three departments that if we're going to offer training, those seem to be the three that we would give that to, you know, give that opportunity to them, you know, a lot of them are just simple things, but if they go to the doctor, that's going to be the thing. Okay, so all of that other paperwork was just for your information, we do have a really great representative, and he's willing to do anything that he can to help in any way and to get our rates down even, so I do like that. I also wanted to.
So, does workers' comp always have to come in first, or do they not use the, the really nice health insurance that we?
My understanding is if it happens on the job, it has to be reported as an accident on the job, and then workers' comp will come right in, and that's what the doctors' offices, hospitals, all of them will do, and so there is, there must be a law that makes that happen, because when you report it as happening on the. And so there is, there must be a law that makes that happen, because when you report it as happening on the job, it's directed. But I can check into it a little further, because some of these, the hit is just for a few hundred dollar bill, but it affects our numbers drastically, so.
Absolutely, I mean, we'd be better off to pay cash out of the deal.
Yeah. So that definitely is, you know, I can do more research and dig into it a little bit better.
But these clumsy police officers cost us a lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, under new hires, I just wanted you to see the list of our new hires this year. When I was first hired, I was warned that hiring would be a big, huge part of my job, and nobody seemed, I didn't even believe it. I didn't think there was gonna be much hiring, but if you look, there's over 86 people were hired just this year. And now a lot of those are rec, but it still takes a lot of time. But I did want you to see that this is our hiring list for just this year.
So whether a full-time employee or a referee for basketball, you still have to do the same paperwork?
I still have to do the same paperwork. There's less paperwork, and there's less digging in a little bit deeper to, you know, get the benefits and that. But it still takes a lot of time and a lot of prep and, and then making sure that I report to all the reporting agencies that I have to report to. Every hire, I have to report to three agencies that we hire people, even if they're just gonna be part-time or, and they're not gonna get retirement. I have to report in TRS, I have to do the e-verify, and then I have to do workers' comp. So, and then when they leave, I also have to report and let them know that they're no longer working for us. So of all the, of these 86 people that were hired, there was quite a few that left also. I just didn't print them. And I wanted you to see it. It was a big hiring year for the county, and that did take a lot of my time. And then EAP, the program with Lonk, I included just a little bit of detail for you, but the main thing I wanted to point out is we're still not utilizing it, you know, real well. I'd say we're still at about one a month, if that, sometimes none. And so, you know, I'll do my best just to let people know about it, which I have done quite a bit this year. And then we have added, letting the fire department know that all the first responders can utilize, you know, the going in for a visit, a wellness check once a year if they need to for the traumas that they see or anything. And then I included these two documents in there to show you how Blue Shady County has announced to their people, their first responders. And this is kinda what I'd like to do, work with Boyd and just come up with an announcement for his people, and then him and Honor can get it out to them and just let them know, so that legally, we've done our job, and then they also all are aware of the fact that they have this available to them through Lonk or Cale to get the help if they need it. Any questions on that? And then I just wanted to make you aware on benefits right now, everything's going really smoothly. We could transition, there's a ton of work right now with transitioning and changing all of the benefit costs with Cale. And then working with Leslie, we both have realized there's quite a few problems from the past that are still lingering. And so I have to take the time now to do a complete audit of everyone's benefits, payroll, everything that's in the system, so I can make sure everything's correct. So that's a huge project right now that I will be working on, and Leslie's printed me some great reports. And I'm just gonna figure out how to come up with the time to do it and to make sure that we have everything correct in the system. And then P E H P did some major changes, and so we've had a few little issues with them. But just, you know, just for your knowledge, they, they did change not only their portal, all their account numbers, everybody. So if any of our employees have any issues with it, they're told, you know, "Go ahead and come to me." I report it to our admin guy and, and our, our benefits guy, and he takes care of it. He calls P E H P and fixes it for us, so. And then I just wanted, I've been trying to put a list together of all of the duties of the Human Resource Department, so I included that. And, and then how some places divide up all the duties. And so if you look at this list of HR duties, there's many on here that I'm not doing, and that is because I don't have the time to do them. But as I continue to audit and fix a few other little issues, hopefully I'll have more time to be able to dig into some of these. And I'll report to you more later when I realize if there's some things I can add. But like, there's no training program right now, there's no orientations for new people. I just meet with them real quick, and we do a quick little, go through the benefit booklet, and, you know, there's just a lot of different things I can add if I have the time, so I'll do that as I can. In the meantime, I just wanted you to see kind of the duties of my department. And then I did find out applicant pro has now been turned over to us, and it's 200 a year.
Very good.
Yeah, so that's not a lot of all. I did go ahead and pay the first year so that we could keep it, because it's our, our whole hiring system goes through that. So that's just, I just wanted to real quick read, kind of update you on my.
Wonderful, thank you, Julie, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Lot of, lot of work occurring in 2022. Okay, we will move to action items, section F. We'll start with item number one, Robert Peterson, Richard Peterson, discussion decision. This is the sale of an airport hangar to William and Jennifer Koots, transfer of the lease to William.
Thank you. On the 16th of December, I did purchase a hangar from Robert and Richard Peterson, a hangar B1 at the Morgan County Airport. My purpose tonight is to request a new 30-year lease for the hangar with the county. I submitted three documents in support of that request, a transfer of ownership, a bill of sale, and a FAA bill of sale to show that we do indeed own an aircraft.
Go ahead.
Typically, it's an assignment and assumption of the lease that's already existing, and do you know when the lease was originally signed?
I do not.
Okay.
Joe, yeah, Joe thinks it's about 10 years ago.
When they signed it, so typically, I mean, it's up to the commission, and I know that we do have some new 30-year leases, and so it may not, it may just be to terminate the previous lease and enter a new 30-year or move in the direction of the assignment and assumption, but then.
It sounds like your preference is terminate the existing lease, enter into a new lease, which would be on the new form.
Yeah.
And would update the rates, so. I don't have a concern about that either.
I don't either.
So if that's the case, we just need to get that new form lease to, to Bill and have him sign it and back to us, and we can approve it. I think it would probably be fine if we approved that, and then just when he sends it, we can sign it. It's the, it's the standard form, so there's nothing, the commissioners are okay with that.
And that was, the space was B1?
B1 is the hangar.
That's one of the old ones, right?
It is. It's one of the older ones. It's built 1960, I believe.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the execution of a new lease agreement for hangar space B1 at the airport for William and Jennifer Kautz on the county's standard form lease agreement. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Okay, moving to action item number two, Julie. This is a resolution for the schedule of the Morgan County Commission meetings for the year 2023. This will be Resolution CR 23-01.
The only thing I need to say about it is Attorney Smith, I don't know if you should call him Garrett or Attorney Smith, that came in and just gave me some suggestions, go ahead and take off the information about the budget season when we do budget meetings and all that. Just take that off, because if there's the paragraph below this that basically states that when the need is there, you will be able to, it gives you permission to be able to add extra meetings or change meetings. So he updated the form, it's nice and clean, and states things better than the previous one, and, and then I did change the July 11th and 18th on there. So, but of course, anything can be changed later in the year.
So we've got two or three of them in here. Are they all, I mean, I looked at them all, and they're virtually the same, so is there any difference?
It's just the way that it's, has to be stated, because, yeah. And the third page is just a simplified version for you to have on hand, and it will say part of the resolution, correct, Garrett? You wanted that to say part of the resolution, the third page or not?
Yes, just.
You have a signature block.
Just it's saying that it will be in the form as follows, and so it's just outlining, and I don't know if this is something that was done in the past, and if it's required by law, or if it's just tradition. And so I'll look into that for next year to see if we can just say it'll be in a form substantially similar to what's listed above. So I'll look into that, but I did update the Open and Public Meetings Act code. I guess there used to be nine chapters under that, and so there's only three now, so all of the code references are up to date.
Okay.
Speaking of the Open and Public Meetings Act, in the past, our, our county attorney was given a brief training on open and public meetings to fulfill our obligation to do that annually. Is that something maybe you could do for us at our next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful.
In a work session or during.
Yeah, it'd be a work session.
One, I know for another board I sit on, the state auditors has.
There's a video.
There's a video, so I don't know if it would be any added to or anything different than what you would recommend, but.
Okay, do you have a copy of the video that you could send me and then?
Yeah, I'll send you the link.
Maybe I could streamline it or say, "Hey, that's a really good video."
Yeah, I think that's kinda why we've had the attorney do it, because it's been a little more abbreviated version. We all, I think, serve on boards that require that training anyway, so we probably all have seen it multiple times, but it's a good refresher, I guess.
I'll forward it to you.
Thank you. Okay, any comments or, or concerns with the 2023 commission meeting dates and the resolution before us?
No, because we can change them if we need it.
We, yes, absolutely can. Being that this is a resolution, it will be a roll call vote when we do get to that point. But with that, we'll look for a motion on Resolution CR-23-01.
I move that we pass Resolution CR-23-01 for the 2020, 2023 Morgan County Commission meeting dates.
Second.
A motion and a second. Again, this is a roll call vote. We'll start with Commissioner Fackrell.
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell.
Aye.
I vote aye. Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
The motion passes, thank you very much. We will now move to action item number three. Commissioner Fackrell, this is discussion decision, approval of Carver, Florick, and James Financial Accounting Services to assist on a monthly basis and reconciliation of financial accounting for the county for the year 2023.
Yes, that one, we started this last year, and according to Kimberly and Leslie, it has been very important for us to have this financial accounting, where he comes up once a month or twice a month, and helps to make sure that things are properly positioned, so that way we can turn over the information to the auditor coming up in a month or two, and that way we can get our audit done, hopefully, before the end of the year, this year, fiscal year. And so I've requested a, since it did not have in the last contract a renewal, I asked them to send us one up, and so Garrett, you'll be getting that shortly, if we approve to go ahead with it. And they said nothing would change, other than that.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
Other than maybe a renewal clause.
So do we have the ability to renew if that happened to go through the procurement process?
That was gonna be my question. I can't remember the exact process for last year, if it was put out, or if there, are they on, on a contract, like a state contract, where we wouldn't require a bid?
Because you requested it last year.
I thought they were on the state.
Yeah, I think they're on the state approved list, because if they're on the state approved.
Then we don't have.
Then we don't have.
We're still the one that put us in contact with them initially over the audit that we had several years ago? Yeah, so it was, it was on a state.
Yeah, so we don't need bidding to use someone that's approved through a state procurement list, if they're already on that list.
So all we have to do then is approve to use them, continue, continue to use them for 2023.
And then we'll just sign their new letter of engagement.
That's correct.
They probably won't even have a contract to use the letter.
Just a letter of engagement like the last one.
And it's as, as needed?
As needed.
The 125.
125.
As long as their rates haven't increased from year to year?
They said they would not.
Have you seen that decrease in usage or not?
I've used him less. I don't, I honestly don't know how often he's been used. I know the last couple months he's been, isn't during their busy time, but he will designate, like, dates, where he's like, "Okay, I'm coming up this day," or "This day is just for you guys," and it has been very helpful, making sure, there's still a lot of.
And so I'm recommending that we continue to use them.
Is that motion?
Just a minute. I will in a minute, but I know that his goal, his, Alex Florick and his company, his goal is to make it to where we do not have to use him as much. And that's the whole goal, of having them come up monthly to just, you know, make sure Kimberly or make sure Leslie has got the paperwork in the proper places, so that way, at the end of the year, we're not trying to find out where the economic development or the, the grant money is, or where the option sales tax is, or any of that kinda stuff. So that's my recommendation, and if nobody else has anything else, I'll, I'll move that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve continuing to use Carver, Florick, and James Financial Accounting Services for 2023.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner McConnell, second. The next item is related to the first, and that is the approval of Carver, Florick, and James Financial Accounting Services to prepare our monthly financials, excuse me, not monthly financials, but our financials for the 2022 audit.
Right, and that one is, goes along with what has been happening, and they've already got it more or less done. And that was the goal, is to have it done, so that way they can pass it off to the auditors.
Well, we might have our audit done early this year.
That's what the goal is.
That's great.
So.
Any discussion on this item? If not, we'll look for a motion.
I move that we approve the Carver, Florick, and James Financial County Services to prepare financials for the 2022 audit.
I'll second it. Or Jared can, my voice is.
Just take him a second. We'll give it to Jared this time.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, item number five, Commissioner Fackrell. This is discussion decision approval to extend contract with Ebert Solutions.
Basically, his contract ended on December 31st of 2022. And so we need to make some kind of decision to keep him or to, to keep Ebert Solutions or to wait, or whatever you wanna do, and I just wanted to bring that up to you.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Concerns, please.
Robert?
My recommendation is that we continue the contract with Ebert Solutions. I recognize there are difficulties associated with economic development and tracking day-to-day tasks and so forth, but I think that in terms of the economic efforts of the county, including the committee associated with it, they like to have the continuity, and I think James does a good job with advancing the economic objectives of the county.
Okay, so our, our contract with James, I didn't see on, on here a renewal contract or anything.
It's the same contract, and it has within it a renewal clause.
I understand that. I'm just, I just am wondering, so we're still on the, basically, year-to-year with, he can quit. So we're still on the basically year-to-year with he can quit or we can quit at any time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I understand we don't want to lose the continuity of it, neither do I. I do feel like I'd like to have further discussion with, with James on being able to have some. I, I kind of feel bad now that we're, we're slowing down our process. If we're the reason he's not putting in these hours, that doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy. But I also would want to make sure that we're paying, we're getting what we pay for as well. So is this still, we're getting paid from?
State, it all comes out of the state grant. We're not.
A grant.
We do not have anything, nothing is coming out of our state, I mean, out of our county funds for economic development. Everything currently is still under Economic Development Rural Grant A, which is an automatic now all the time. I don't know why they just don't give us automatic $200,000. But they just, we have to fill out a report every year in June, in May and June to be able to tell them of our progress and then also to get a approval for the next fiscal year, which starts July 1st. And so we get that $200,000. They are now making it where if we do not have any progress in economic development, that, I mean, if we're just spending the money and not really getting any results, then they will cut that funding. And at that time, we cut our contract.
And who's given that result to this state?
Who has been?
Yeah.
James has been sending it in.
You've been doing that.
And it's been in conjunction with John and I and Robert to make sure that it's compiled completely and accurately. And if it's not, and if I don't see something being done, I will make sure that it's getting done.
Okay, well, I was, I was gonna move to postpone, but I don't want to, I didn't know it was gone, the contract. So as long as we can have that discussion with James, I'd like to do that. I would like to continue to make this profitable for both of us, you know? I don't, I don't want to pay James for things we aren't getting, but I don't want to, as well, I want to get the most we can for our county for the monies that we're paying out. And that's a legitimate objective and requirement. I, the communication software is, are we waiting on Mauricio on that?
We're waiting on me and Mauricio.
Okay.
Right now. Garrett gave me a, a copy of the contract back to have it redone. And so I have not got, I mean, Mauricio and I are both working on that, trying to get it completed. So that way we have the correct wording. Then we'll bring it back to the commission. The commission then can improve it, and it's being paid for out of the Economic Opportunity Act.
And I just think, because I just think it would facilitate a lot of the conversation that Commissioner Wilson is looking to have with James and, and.
Yes, I agree.
Well, now I don't even understand exactly what you're talking about.
What we're talking about.
Well, if, if nothing else, it gives him a better reporting mechanism.
Right.
And you can choose to access it and look at those reports without waiting to hear from me or Commissioner Fackrell or, or from James. But in the interim, you should just call him if, if you want to have that further discussion.
Okay.
We also have a CEO meeting tomorrow morning, and that's once a month that we zoom linked to where we talk about everything, what we worked on, what we're working on into the next month. So in that meeting, you'll get a majority of that information. So if we want to extend that link to all the commissioners, they can zoom in on that meeting with the launch.
I'd love that.
Yeah, if you'll provide that out to the commissioners.
Great for me.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, we had a work session just before this meeting, and I just expressed my concerns with, with James. I, I think our economic development is vital for our county to proceed forward. So I appreciate the work that James has done, and I don't want the questioning to, to, to come across as negative at all, maybe just as a, as a check and a balance and understanding what's, what's coming in with what we're paying for. So I know this agreement, you say it's the same agreement as, as a year ago. Garrett just sent it over, and in looking at it, there might be some scope and deliverables that we might want to adjust from a year ago. And then, and then just maybe some of the thoughts that we had in our, in our meeting of, of tracking and whatever software and just, just including that, just to make it a little bit, I don't know if transparent is the right word, but that's overused in government. But anyways, just to be able to see, see what's happening from that perspective. So I, I, I think James has been very helpful for the county, so I want to continue that work. Just make sure we're, we're a little bit cleaner with what we're doing, so. From our side, probably mainly from what I heard earlier, so.
And that was the purpose of the happy meeting, because the scope from the contract last year was from the one-year deliverables from the strategic plan. So that's where we're trying to clean out mixed year deliverables so that we reflect it in the strategic plan. So we make sure we're in that contract.
And what I'd like to do is, we didn't get, get a chance to do it while you were in here in the work session. I would like to see us have another one where we get a chance to tell you, not just me, tell you what we want to have accomplished this next year in that one-year strategic plan, not just from what Robert and I have, or Commissioner McConnell and I have been saying to you, we want, you know, these guys may have a different perspective, and I'd like to have their input into what they would like to see in economic development. Because if we don't, then it's just Robert and I. And I would like to see the other three of us be involved in that process.
Well, because that, then when we say this is what we'd like to see, and he says, well, I'd like to give that to you, but Matt, you need to get out of the way with this in your department or whatever. I, I can know that, but it's helpful for me to know that we're slowing some processes down so we can change that.
So that's my hope, is that we can all be involved in giving them recommendations as to what they want. Now, the Economic Opportunity Advisory Board will be meeting tomorrow, and they will be discussing more of the things that they want to have accomplished. And it goes through all the different aspects of economic development within the county, which includes trails, recreations, outdoor recreation. It goes into, you know, what are we doing with state parks? What are we doing with the businesses? What are we doing to recruit more businesses? What are we doing to export our businesses? What are we doing to, to help out all these different things? So in those meetings, they're going to be discussing it, and we're going to have a discussion tomorrow on some of these items. And, and that's what I want from your perspective as to what we want to accomplish from the leadership of this county. So.
Yeah, I guess my thought is we have a contract from a year ago. I think we need to move forward, but we need to make sure what we want in the contract is there or amended. It might be okay moving forward as long as we amend those things we're concerned with.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Is that a motion, Commissioner Anderson? That's all I had, was the beginning of a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the extended contract with Ebert Solutions in the year January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023 with, I guess I should say future amendments, but with amendments and as approved by our attorney. Does that sound good, James? Go ahead.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Look at that, we are right on the dot for our six o'clock public hearing. So we will move into the public hearing portion of our meeting. This is regarding Morgan County fees. And Cindy, I'll maybe hand it over to you to talk about these if you'd like. I, I do have a few questions and comments for some updates we need to probably make. Perfect.
Go ahead with your questions, so.
So I noticed on the Croydon Park camping, you have it as $10 per hour. We need to update that to a flat rate.
Residents on the.
Residents.
Yeah, on the residents, it's, it's currently $100 per night.
For the camping one?
For the camping, yeah. And then I think on that level, we probably ought to note on these other items that what people are renting is the Bowery facilities at these parks. They're not renting the entire park. So like on the Croydon Park, the, the top two there, those should both be Croydon Park, Bowery. I think on Enterprise, it should be the Bowery. Kent Smith Park, we've got the two fields, but there's also Bowery there, and we probably ought to list that out as well. And then I think the other thing that we need to talk about is that when we set a lot of these fees originally, we kind of threw in there, and, and it was my fault because I did it last minute. I said we should charge more to, to non-county residents, and, and I threw out was triple the amount, which we've done. But I don't know that that's where we necessarily want to be long-term. We've had some discussion particularly on the rifle range, and I'll let Commissioner Wilson speak to that on maybe what that should or shouldn't look like. I don't know if $75 is, is too much for out-of-county residents. And again, the rationale between county residents versus out-of-county residents is the fact that all of these facilities are subsidized. The cost to maintain them and operate them is subsidized by tax dollars that are paid from our general fund that come from county residents. And so I also want to make sure that our county residents have really the first opportunity to use these facilities over non-county residents, which is kind of the rationale behind charging more for non-county residents. But I think we do need to have some discussion on what that should look like and if we ought to make any adjustments to those fees, so.
And I thought that was $100 for residents, 300 for non-residents.
Yeah, that's, it is. It's supposed to be 100, not 10 per hour on the camping.
Right, I know, per night, not per hour. And 300, yeah, I agree a little bit with you. But 300 per night, you just go a lot.
I will say, it's a nice facility, and for a large group, the cost per person is crazy low, even at 300 bucks. I've seen some big groups there, you know, 40, 50 people that are not county residents.
Sorry, I'm still not sure about that.
It's probably as cheap as you get at any other facility. But that being said, 300 may still be too much. Maybe, maybe it ought to be double for county residents or non-county residents instead of triple.
Do we know what the usage has been this past year?
Not that much. It's went down.
It went down a lot because, because of that, because most of the usage on the Croydon Park camping is out-of-county residents, the vast majority.
Yeah. Brett put down 200 on that.
Versus, versus the 300?
I think that's.
And I'm not opposed to doing that.
I think that makes sense.
It still doesn't cover our costs, frankly, but that's okay. I mean, we.
But the camping does include the Bowery.
It does, it includes the Bowery.
And I think we're not beyond there.
And the reason we come up with that, we did do, we did call around, and that's a little more in line than $200 a night than the 300. I mean, I'm all for making more money, like you say, but I'm the one that takes the complaints, and so I know.
And I do too.
So if a person doesn't like our camping facility, they call you?
Oh, yeah.
Really?
They don't like the pricing of it.
Yes.
What we have is, we have a lot of people who are non-county residents that use that facility for their family reunions and church groups.
Yeah, I think we have their own contact number.
The Morgan County Auditorium, I would like that difference. We had a situation a week ago or two weeks ago where the cops were called. They thought they, it was 12:00 AM to 12:00 PM, 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM. So there's only two time slots. I, I asked Matt, I said, set the schedule for Matt saying, how about 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM? And 12:00 PM to four, so we have three, four-hour slots. My question is still $100 on those four-hour time slots or?
I suggested $50 for a four-hour time slot. If they want it for eight hours, it'll cost them $100.
Why are we set on four? Why are we not two or why are we not one? And they can block out four hours worth of?
You know, I just, because a party is, I would think.
The type, the kind of parties that come here are more like a luncheon, more, more of a four-hour block. If you rent the search and rescue, it's a whole day or a night. Does that make sense? And here's more of a, of a four-hour block. That's the way, it seems like the residents or whoever's renting it does it a lot. It's not really an all-day thing, or it's not overnight like it would be at the, you know, if you're gonna have a wedding, let's say, to search and rescue. Usually run it for two days. You set up Friday, you have a wedding Saturday, or you set up Thursday, you have a wedding Friday. I mean, we don't have to do it this way this year.
Yeah.
What's the expectation in terms of cleaning the facility between?
That's, that's the other thing that I'd like to implement, is a $100 deposit for cleaning because that's a problem sometimes. They come in here on Monday, Jody's half a day cleaning up when they should have been able to clean it themselves. And a deposit's the only way you're gonna secure that.
And then it's returned if it's.
And who's gonna check it for them?
Yeah.
Is Jody?
Yeah, that, that won't be a problem because Liz or Jody or we can check it. We do it on a search and rescue already. We just have, we've been involved there. I get a lot of complaints with Liz and Jody about that.
Maybe not on an hourly, but maybe a two-hour basis. I think four hours seems like a pretty big block to.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that timeframe, but.
I don't know, that's just my thought.
I thought the $50.
So $50 for two hours, is what you're saying? $50 for two hours?
Well, I, I think what Brett is saying, he was saying $50 for four hours.
Four hours.
Yeah, I don't know, 50 bucks for two hours is kind of high, I think, too. I, I'm agreeing with you, Brett. I think it's a little high.
And to give you an idea, it used to be 25.
For four hours.
That's what it used to be. When I came here, it was 25.
Of course, at that rate, if we're expecting to clean the facility.
We'd lose.
We, we'd lose all kinds of money. I mean, utilities, we're spending more than that.
So 25 for two hours is what we're saying? And 50 for four hours?
You could change it by the hour and block it out. That's another idea, right? You could go $25 an hour or whatever you do.
$25 per two hours.
Per two hours. And block it out. 10-hour day, maybe you have to craft show in here, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, still keep.
Anyway, just some ideas. You can think about.
Well, my only concern with that is if, if these, if the people who rent the facility expect us to come in in between and clean, is that an expectation?
I don't think it is.
You mean.
Because I'd hate for us to, to have two-hour blocks and us have to try to get somebody in here every two hours to clean the facility.
You're right, that creates another problem.
I mean, that creates a whole nother issue if that's the expectation.
I mean, the girls have just put up with a lot of cleaning, you know what I mean?
And in that regard, we'd be better off not having even shorter blocks. We'd be better off having the entire day so they only clean once a day, but.
Block it out for a week?
I mean, well, you, you know what I'm getting at, like, just to have them try to come in and clean in between is a problem.
Three, four-hour periods isn't a bad deal, I don't think.
Yeah, that may, that may be fine.
I hope that's on that.
And it's, we probably don't have a lot of back-to-back, I mean, that probably doesn't occur except maybe during the holidays and stuff.
The reason it's fresh right now is because of the holiday season, or we have people here on Sunday.
If the reasoning from two to four is that it needs to be cleaned in between, we probably ought to let residents know that.
Or are they required to clean it themselves, and we're just taking it?
A $100 deposit is gonna fix a lot of what we've.
Plus, if we're gonna have to provide release of the.
The other thing, I guess, if, if they're required to clean it themselves, and we're, and if they don't, then we're doing the $100 thing, then that changes it, and maybe a two-hour block is just fine.
Yeah, that's what, that's my reasoning on the four hours. We could try it.
Do we have very many out-of-county residents that use it?
Um, no.
Not, not too often on this.
Yeah, you're rug people, but they're, are they in county?
Which people?
I think she's in county.
Yeah, I think so.
I think, I don't.
The out-of-county people that use our facility, it's the rifle range, the Croydon camping, and then the, the playfields down at the Kent Smith Park. Those are the out-of coun, out-of-county.
Yeah. I know the Croydon residents on the, on the Croydon Park have been ticked a couple of times on, that I know of, you know what I mean, about what's went on up there. That's, that was part of your reasoning.
Do we have enough parking for 40 people to go camping up there?
Well, we don't. That's, that's part of the problem. I mean, if you park in on the grass, there is, but there's times when I've come past there, and there's people parked clear up the road, and it's down to one lane because they parked in the road. and it's down to one lane because they parked in the road, and there's people who leave the facility a mess. Plus, when it's being used for camping, the local residents can't use it, because they're renting the whole park. I think it's a nice facility, and I think it's good to allow people to use it for camping. I mean, my family's used it for family reunions many times, and it's great for that. We've rented it for three days straight and just enjoyed it. But, that's one of the things that I don't want to encourage people to just come, especially from out-of-county, and camp there, and beat up our facility, and us have to spend a lot of money.
Well, cleaning deposit and parking, anywhere you go camping, they say, you know, nineteen-foot or.
If you break something, we've got a little leverage.
How many parking spaces you have.
We didn't put that on here, but that's, you know, we could add that, too. I mean, we, anytime you rent, especially camping, you could have a deposit, whatever we decide on the price.
And parking spaces.
Well, we had, we had some issues, was it two years ago, when we had a fire ban, and they were out there with a campfire. I stopped there and talked to them about it one night, said, hey, you know, there's a fire ban right now, you can't have a campfire out here.
Did they agree with you?
No, they were, they were actually a little bit belligerent. They were like, well, you know, it's in this fire pit. I said, I understand that, but, you know, it's county-wide, and it's, it's all flames. We're not, you know, we're not discriminating whether it's in a fire pit or not, you can't do this. They finally did put it out, but still, it can be an issue.
I think we were too low on stuff, and then, you know what I mean, we gotta kind of find a medium there. Because I think we was way too low, like, ten dollars is ridiculous, but.
Yeah.
I guess, I mean, we're not gonna make money on it, we're just trying to cover our costs a little bit, and try to keep it in, rein it in a little bit, especially the cleaning.
So, a little bit of change of gears to the rifle range. I know Commissioner Wilson might have some comments on it, but I live just a few blocks from there, so I didn't record it, but there's been some times where it's pretty dark outside, and, and they're still using the facility. And I don't think, I don't know, I just don't think that's safe. And I know, I know we have a block, when I looked it up, it was just a month ago, I was like, huh, I wonder what time we close this? And I think it said eight o'clock, I'm like, holy cow, it gets dark at five-thirty-six, so.
We probably ought to do winter hours.
Maybe it ought to be till dusk or something, or winter hours.
That last time slot needs to stay till dusk.
I use the deputies, I mean, I'll get a call tonight maybe on something. I use the deputies a lot, you know what I mean? I get a call, somebody climbing the fence in pickleball courts in the middle of summer. It's the deputy's job to go down and take care of that for me. It's not, I'm not a, you know what I mean, I can't give a ticket for that. I mean, I go down there and take care of it, but you send a deputy down there, that'll, just like if you hear somebody shooting after hours, the deputy's glad to go up there.
But, I guess to help that issue, we can just, we can define when they're able to.
They'll say, well, it said eight o'clock.
But you're still gonna have something like that go on. You're gonna hear it again, probably, even if you post the times or whatever. So, we just need to use.
I take matter into my own hands.
Oh, yeah, you record.
Just like your fire, if it was, you know, Commissioner Newton, you could have called the deputy and said, hey, they got a fire up there, and take care of it.
So, the.
I did send our fire warden up there the next day, and he did talk to him, and they didn't have the fire the next night.
Little authority.
Guy with the badge, it was better than me just walking up and saying, knock it off, but anyway. Commissioner Wilson, we've talked a little bit about the fee for out-of-county residents for the rifle range. What's your feeling on that? That the seventy-five dollars that we currently have is, is pretty high. Do we want to just do, like, double the resident fee, and go to thirty dollars?
Do we know what other rifle ranges?
Well, yeah, I've had, I've had several people call me, so.
And it's went down tremendously.
And then I called around, so what about thirty dollars for that instead of seventy-five?
That's fine, that's fine.
Forty is what I come up with, you know, St. Colin Huntsville.
I like that. For non-resident?
For non-resident.
I like that.
That's the amount I come up with, just making some calls.
And you're gonna keep it fifteen for two hours for residents, correct?
Yeah.
And then, forty?
Yep.
For non-residents?
Yep.
Did you get that?
Now, back, back up on the Croydon Park for camping for residents, ten dollars per night, or ten dollars per?
It's a hundred dollars.
So, it's a hundred for?
A night.
Okay.
I'll have to check that out.
Now, this is not on the list, but what is the search and rescue?
Home for me to go camping.
Cost?
That's a hundred dollars.
That's a hundred dollars per day? So, a hundred dollars per day for that one?
And I wanna add a hundred-dollar cleaning for that, too.
I was gonna say, you probably ought to start adding the cleaning costs on almost all of it.
Same as the auditorium, a hundred-dollar cleaning is what we'd like to add.
Well, you need to be careful, are you taking a cleaning deposit to cover their failure to clean? Or are we offering to clean it for a hundred bucks?
No, their failure to clean, they get, we keep their.
Cleaning deposit.
Encouraging them to clean it themselves.
So, we have cleaning deposits on what?
On everything.
Search and rescue and.
And the auditorium.
And.
And part, I mean, I really didn't give it that much thought, but the Croydon Park, that's the only park we rent out. We don't rent, we don't camp in any of the parks.
You wanna do a little bit of a deposit there, if we have to clean up a bunch of garbage?
I think we ought to. I know there's been situations where it's a mess.
And each of the Boweries.
Yeah, the Boweries ought to be the same.
Boweries also.
Yeah.
What's this "fixed" mean?
What thing?
Call your local vet.
Yeah, exactly.
Spader neutered. We probably ought to note on this, under the senior lifetime dog license, what constitutes a senior, and that people understand that we're talking about the owner and not the animal. Not that I have an old dog, so this is cheap, you know what I mean? It's, and I think we do fifty-five and older, is that correct?
No, it's sixty.
Or is it sixty?
Sixty. I've talked to Clayton today.
So, we probably ought to put that in there, like, older, sixty years and over.
Are you sure it's not fifty-five, 'cause I'm fifty-seven?
No, it's sixty. It's sixty. In fact, I thought it was gonna be sixty-two. In fact, it was, when I got my first one was sixty-two, so we've dropped it quite a bit.
Because I think at fifty-five, I get a discount at Chuckarama.
Yeah, that's true. I have a question on that.
Start getting your AAR.
I talked to Clayton on this, and the senior lifetime dog license and the three-year dog license, you need to just put in notation or whatever, they have to be fixed. Both of those, because mine aren't fixed, not yet.
I'll get proper terminology.
And that isn't it or spade. Except in Morgan.
Just cashmere.
Is that thing fixed?
Or you get on the parks, ten dollars for an hour, and we've moved that down to an hour because of soccer down there, because we've had.
So.
So.
We're not charging anything more for the out-of-residents at Kent Smith?
On the fields, we probably ought to.
Yeah.
And on their Boweries, but.
Does it, does it keep our people from using?
Yeah.
Do they come up to play a team for Morgan, or do they just rent the facility?
They come up, practice usually, they come from down below.
When practice is one hour, they typically, unless all the fields down there are busy, they typically aren't gonna pay the money to come all the way up just to practice on a field. If, where, where you run into issues are games. There's not a whole lot of space for games, and so that's where you're gonna have possibly out-of.
And haven't you got complaints from Lydia about that? Hasn't Lydia talked to you about not being able to get her teams, what she wants because of people coming from down below?
Yeah.
She talked to me about that.
Yeah.
That's been a little bit of a problem for her.
Does she not block it out?
Now she does, but she hadn't, in fact, because there wasn't even payment down there, and they were using it, and Lydia tried to use it, and they were using it, it just, it was a hot mess.
I'm not against, if there are games that are happening on that field, and everybody's from non-resident, I'm not against charging more.
Right, but when they come up for practice or something like that, then?
I don't know. I don't know if you're gonna see a lot of teams.
I'm just worried, but I'd like to see, I mean, because I've heard Lydia, Lydia also complain about that. And I, I thought it would be good for her to have first choice on that, or something to do with her, with our rec, our sports program.
Sure.
Yep. You almost said it.
I know, I said. Our rec sports program. That I would like to see that they, that we get first choice at these, these facilities that we have.
It sounds like she knows that now, and that's corrected.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
And we do need to add the Kent Smith Bowery to the, to the list here. And what about the Milton Park? I don't see that on here.
What?
Milton Bowery, I don't even know if you could, I don't even know if you could rent that field, but.
That's a popular park.
Is that, is that a little arena there, is that also part of the park? So, we probably ought to include the Bowery slash arena, right?
Well, I.
Or, what do you think?
I get calls on that, we just rent the, we haven't rented the arena, and I think if you do that, you might have a problem. There's so many people that use that. I mean, I always say first come, first served. You know what I mean, I don't know.
They just go use it.
Yeah, everybody uses it. We got horse trainers that go in there at five o'clock and ride three horses there.
So, just the Bowery, then?
Just the Bowery. That's the way I would suggest it. It's a busy little arena for that reason. I mean, people are pretty respectful, I haven't had any problems, any calls like that. Just I get calls, do we rent it, or do we use it, and first come, first served. Till we have a big problem, a big, big fight, like she was talking about.
Tell the cops to call.
Tell the cops to.
Now, I have another question on the rifle range. I had a consumer, or a county resident, ask me that after, on Friday evenings, for instance, and that's what he was talking about. He says, Friday evenings in the summertime, it would be nice, be nice, I mean, he doesn't know if he's gonna use it or not, but is there any way that they could possibly go and use it after, the rifle range after work, if it's not being used? And then, if that's the case, how do they get a key, or how do they get an entry into it? And so, that's something that we still may want to consider, is not just the key, but an electronic key, that whoever is over the rifle range can give them that after they've paid their fee.
I guess the thoughts I have on this, and I can't remember if I talked to Commissioner Wilson about it or not, but we, we had discussed with Jeremy, an electronic lock, that had, that had helped mitigate some of these issues. But I'm, I guess I'm not a fan of somebody just going in and using it if it's open versus going through the process. I mean, block out the time, pay for the fee, and then, and then go. But just to have anybody at any time be able to use it if they haven't blocked it out, if there's, if it's available. I think that's, that's where you get in the issues of two people coming in at the same time, and.
That's a lot of calls I get on the weekend, when if they can use it, and say, well, you've gotta go during business hours to get the key. I mean, most of them figure out the system, and it's not a real problem, but it's calls I get, I mean, they would do that if you, if I said, no, I got a key, come up and get it, they'd do it. But we can't go there.
Yeah, and some electronic lock, and calling Brett saying, give me the code, 'cause I paid my fee online.
And I don't know it for sure, I, you know what I mean, riding a horse.
I'll talk with Jeremy this week and get more of an idea.
We did talk about that, didn't we, Matt, before, about?
Yeah, electronic lock.
Yeah, the last bid he got was so expensive, that we just.
For an electronic lock?
You gotta have internet, so you can control.
Had to have internet, had to have a motorized gate.
Why do you have to have a motorized gate for a lock?
I, you said that there was something available, but you've never come through with proof of that.
I'll work on that.
I thought, I thought.
He heard us over the, our meeting, and he got right on it, and he said, this is all I can find, so.
No, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, there's electronic, just padlocks.
There are.
Because I'd love to have that.
Okay, I'll update you this week on it.
And the advantage is, we could even set hours on this, where, even if they have the code, they can't open the lock, you know, after ten PM.
You change it every week, so people don't have.
And I'll, I'll switch the times up myself, so it's accommodating.
There he is, right there.
Garrett did find some, but they were all Bluetooth, the Amazon ones he sent me, who said you were gonna do some more looking.
Yeah, so the Bluetooth, you have to go up.
Liz actually got a bid for the sliding gate and everything, and that's what seventy-five came from.
Yeah, I remember that.
We don't need to.
I can't remember what it was.
But all of the little locks, they tend to be Bluetooth, so somebody has to be within forty feet to set the lock. So, that's what we're, if you remember, Garrett.
Yeah, I've placed a call up to the senior center also, to see if.
So, how are they doing it on, like, the homes that they rent out and stuff like that? Like, we did one in Alaska.
It's Wi-Fi.
They have a relator that uses a Bluetooth device to.
No, I have one that I can control right now from my phone for a house in Florida.
We still don't have it.
But you have it connected to Wi-Fi.
It's Wi-Fi.
Oh, so you have to have Wi-Fi.
We gotta get Wi-Fi up there.
I can check them with the senior.
Do we not have internet at the, at the search and rescue building?
Not yet.
No.
We need to get that done, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments on the fees? Do you have the list of?
Thanks, Jeremy.
I noted stuff on here as well, but.
Thanks for listening in on us.
I've got the list. So, do the list and then come back to the next one, or what do you want me to do here?
What do you want to do? We've, we've opened a public hearing on this, we've advertised for the public hearing, we can handle this, and Garrett, stop me.
I've been making all the changes as we've been talking, and I can go print it and circulate a copy, if you want it.
That's awesome.
I think that's the route we ought to go, rather than.
So, we're gonna be in.
Try to bring it back later, rather than advertising it on that.
So, but just some clarifications, so it's fifty dollars per time slot for the auditorium with a hundred-dollar cleaning deposit.
And it's a four-hour time slot.
And a four-hour time slot, so I kept those the same. So, Croydon Park Bowery for residents is ten dollars for one hour? And is that also with the cleaning deposit?
That's, yeah, we need to ask about that.
Do cleaning deposits on Boweries?
Do we want?
This is for residents. I would say do it on non-residents.
Well, Trudy told me that when they family went to use that Bowery, it was a mess.
And then they had to clean it. So, we probably ought to do a cleaning deposit on everyone.
We spent a couple hours.
They can get their money back.
At least they'd clean it eighty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think auditorium and Boweries for cleaning deposit.
I agree.
Do you want even one hour to have a full hundred-dollar cleaning deposit?
They can get it back.
Right.
Yeah, I think if it's just deposit, is it, that's related to the cost to clean it, not the time they spent.
Not the time they spent. So, maybe we just put all, all Boweries.
Subject to a hundred-dollar cleaning.
Subject to a hundred-dollar clean deposit.
Well, when you say subject to, does, will it be required, when they open it up, were they gonna have to pay a hundred and ten dollars?
When they come and get the keys, yes.
Okay.
That's what they've been doing in the past. They'll go get the keys to the Bowery.
So, is that gonna add just almost as much, where we have to go back and check and make sure it was cleaned before we give them back their hundred dollars?
Well, I mean, that time of year, we're there about every day anyways, so I don't think that's a problem.
All right, so now, the Kent Smith Park, is there a resident, non-resident? Or is it just gonna keep it the same, ten dollars per hour?
Why do we only have a non-resident fee on the Croydon Bowery, and it's four hours, and everything else is one-hour time slots? Probably ought to change that.
Just down to hours?
Either to hours, or? If we're gonna do, we either need to decide that we're going to do non-resident for all of our Bowery facilities at every park, or not.
Yeah, the reason why I did the time slots is because of the soccer.
Yeah, the ten, but we could say all of our Boweries are four hours instead of one hour, I suppose, or we could leave them at one hour, I don't care, but.
One hour, I totally, whatever.
Well, and that might be mine, when I got the list, it was ten dollars for an hour, or four hours for forty. And I was just like, well, that's the same, so I just did that. But maybe, I think Boweries probably are gonna be used for more than one hour.
Yep.
And so, you might just do the four-hour, like, forty for.
Just do four-hour blocks on all the Boweries?
Do whatever you guess.
But, but as far as resident versus non-resident, I don't know that we have a big issue with non-residents using the Bowery facilities, to be honest. I think it's really, again, just the camping and the rifle range, and potentially the play fields. That may not be a big deal if, if she's now blocking off those times. That's probably not a huge issue for the playing fields, but for the camping and the rifle range, I think is still a little bit of an issue.
Then I don't think I'd.
Just get rid of the non-resident on the Boweries?
Yep.
I agree.
So, Ryland and Jack do go check the Boweries every day because they check the bathrooms, they clean the bathroom if they have to. So, they, they do. So they, they do get checked all summer long. Oh, good, for that reasons.
That's awesome.
Especially Kent Smith.
Well, those people in Mount Green.
I actually think it's hard for them to come up.
They've got horrible aim down there.
Do you want the camping to have the same hundred dollar cleaning deposit?
Yeah, absolutely. They're using the Bowery.
I was just saying, does it need to be higher for camping, or is it, is that sufficient?
I keep it the same.
Yeah, I just do it the same and...
Not make it too difficult.
I mean, hopefully, that's a high enough amount that people clean up after themselves and we don't have to keep it in most cases.
We're doing a closed session.
So we get all those adjustments made, though?
I think so. And I moved it, so it's all in alphabetical order, so.
So another question, going on from here, we have some price changes. If they've already scheduled, it's a done deal, or do we change the price and then tell them and give them the refunds, or what do you want there?
It's going to be government card.
I feel like if you've already booked it, it's...
These are the questions that are coming towards us, right?
Press the easy button.
I, I say if they've already scheduled, then move on.
That's easiest.
Yeah, I, I agree. If they, and they could, I guess, choose to cancel it and rebook it.
Yeah, rebook it.
That's, that's an option. If it happens to be in the stages form to do that. But yeah, then they're going to have to pay their deposit too, so, okay.
And then I'll fix the winter hours tomorrow, so.
Wonderful.
And so these other fees that you have in here, you've got an assessor's rule. What is that?
I just could not find any resolution on the assessor's fee. So she does a, a...
It's the tax rule.
Yes, thank you.
She wants the entire, somebody wants the entire printed tax rule?
Yeah, I can see that.
That's what she come up with, is that amount, so.
And then these other ones, um, you've got the airport tie-downs, clerk's office, um, you've got some that are missing as far as business license, uh, amount. Um, fairgrounds fees. Is everything staying the same as what you got?
They're all on resolutions. These were the ones that didn't have a resolution to it.
The resolution is only the fees that we just went over. It doesn't include all the rest of those.
So we're not changing anything else?
No, not currently.
Josh said he was going to work on his...
His section.
His section. But we've got all resolutions there too, so.
Is there a reason where you're calling these grandma fees?
Grandma fees?
Grandma?
Grandma Met Records Access Management Act.
But it should be one M instead of two?
That's when your grandma's calling you.
I don't know if there's a second M.
I don't know either, but I guess the thought process I'm having is, these are, these can be also requested outside of grandma, right?
Oh, yeah.
I guess to me, it's just if you want copies or whatever, then this is what the cost is, but to call it grandma fees, I might.
Because most likely, like, if, if anything, like deeds or, they need to get copy fees and they have to request it from a grandma fee, a grandma request.
Because what I'm used to is, um, grandma requests are few and far in between versus just residents coming in saying, hey, can I get a copy of this or copy of that? Versus what's associated with grandma, so I guess, or grandma, whatever we want to say.
And that's like with elections, it's everything grandma to me. So they can't get anything election-wise unless they're under grandma.
I guess my preference would just be copy fees, or however you want to say it. I, because it, document fees, whatever you want to say, but I wouldn't solely say grandma fees.
I know in the state, they, and it did not pass, the last year, they were trying to say that if it's anything more than a certain amount of time that it takes to get all the information together, then that they were going to have a higher fee. I don't know if that's in the new legislation or not this year.
I think it's almost that now.
That's already part of it, that you can charge your actual cost.
You have to let them know ahead of time what it's going to cost, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say document fees on that. If we can change that, I don't know if we can, Cindy, but...
Um, I will.
So what's the cost if I'm not requesting a grandma request for a call?
If it's... I know if you are asking for it and it's your thing, it doesn't cost you anything.
Thank you.
Look at you.
I'm going to hear the expression.
This looks like exactly what we discussed to me.
Yep.
The copy looks phenomenal.
This is great. Appreciate your work on this, Cindy and Brad and Garrett.
Do we, um, our recreation sports, we do not have to pay that, correct?
What are you, sorry, what are you asking?
On Kent Smith Park or...
No, we, we don't charge ourselves.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene the public hearing.
I'll second it.
The motion, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Oh, any opposed?
Do a roll call.
Uh, yeah.
Just to open and close the public hearing.
No, no, not for the public hearing, but on the resolution.
Okay, all right.
I'll move that we pass Resolution CR...
Did anybody want to speak?
Okay, seeing none, we'll look for a motion to close the public hearing, reconvene the public meeting.
Second.
Uh, motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and you opposed. Okay. You're up.
Thank you.
I'll move that we approve Resolution CR dash twenty-three dash oh-two, a resolution of the Morgan County Commission adopting certain amendments to the Morgan County fee schedule.
I'll second.
The motion a second, this is a roll call vote.
So just a question on the motion, that's as modified tonight and...
The new one.
Correct, and printed here and given to each of us.
Okay. Okay, this is a roll call vote, Commissioner Fackrell.
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell.
Aye.
I vote aye. Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes and is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Fackrell.
Unfortunately, I have a presentation for a second.
You have a presentation?
So why don't you go ahead with this? Why is it out?
I have no comment.
You have no comments, you say? Okay, I have no comments at this time. Commissioner Anderson?
Um, I have no comments with the exception of we just asked for, uh, mentioned to Garrett, we wanted to do a closed session, so, but besides that, no comments.
Commissioner Wilson?
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay, Commissioner Fackrell?
All right, so you got it.
Let's see if I can do it.
I'm kind of nervous with Blaine with remotes over there. I'm not sure what we're going to see.
Got it.
Not quite.
No, you, you're there, man. Look at that. Screen's showing.
Okay. Um, for everybody's information, if, if you're on me right now.
It's like a hearing aid.
Turn off the lights, if you can for me.
Is that a hearing aid?
Okay, I wanted to, uh, let you guys see since you gave me an email earlier this week.
The woolly bear?
Well, the woolly, woolly worm.
That's a, that's wild.
Is that, is that the actual woolly worm right there?
That is the actual woolly worm right there.
Is he alive?
Yeah.
He's alive. Yeah, he's alive.
He's just very fuzzy then.
But I can't get him.
Oh, there he goes. Yep, look at that.
So what is it supposed to be telling us?
Okay, this one here is what it's telling us. Now, I'm going to switch to another screen, but notice how much black is on each end and the, uh, brown thing in between. Okay, now I'm going to go to another page.
So remind us, is it the shorter the brown?
I'm going to do that right now.
Did you take measurements on the width of the brown?
Don't kill his presentation.
Sorry, we're asking questions prematurely.
That's right, you are, so hang on, let me get to the proper spot.
Those things make you itch if you play with them, though.
Well, they're there.
That's why I don't go camping.
Okay, here is the explanation.
Oh, I've never even seen one.
Okay, so this is the woolly bear caterpillar. And according to the size of this brown thing that we have here, we couldn't be in for a very harsh winter. Uh, the more black, the harsher, or moderately harsh.
Well, the guy you got there looks just like the one on top.
He looks like the top one, for sure.
So I just thought I'd give you that as an update.
She wants to take a picture of the woolie.
Well, I'm not, I'm trying to read it.
Sorry, let me try to get it up closer if you need. There.
The more black, the more harsh.
Wow.
I was just going to say, we're going to have to up our budget for...
Oh, no.
So if you'd like to have a picture or like to feel this thing.
We're going to have to get Jared a back piece.
You're welcome to. I brought the thing.
So what I want to know is where did you get it?
In my basement.
You want me to bust that thing down after he tells me it's going to make it itch?
So, anyway, that was...
So is he technically a caterpillar?
Yeah, they are. But I do not know what it is.
Does it turn into a butterfly?
Kind of moth or butterfly?
Yeah, and I don't know exactly what it is.
Every one of them has been even orange or...
Fascinating.
So as a public item for Jared's poor back because of winter and having to shovel snow.
Wow, winter begins mild, ends harsh.
Ends harsh.
Okay. If there's more towards his head versus his tail, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see what side the head or tail was. I'm just kidding.
Would you like to look?
His was right in the middle.
Yeah, I think it was right in the middle.
It's weird, you can barely even see it.
Yeah, so that was the, uh, an education thing that we did tonight. Um, so now as far as another comment for, that I have, is during the holidays, the, um, and I need to close this off if I can figure out how to do it now. Um, okay. And we'll turn that off. There you go.
It's amazing.
I don't care. Um, as far as in, during the holidays, I, I received a, um, a request from us as a county, uh, commission, um, to, for astrotourism. And the reason why that, that grant, I mean, it's not a grant, it's for the purpose of helping us to continue with dark skies. And, and so I gave...
I was going to say, what's the astrotourism?
Yeah. And so basically, that's what it is, is for us and whether or not we would give any support to that. And so I did send them back a letter just saying, yes, we do support that as part of our tourism. And I'm hoping that you guys can agree with me on that.
I thought we already had some, that our ordinance speaks to dark skies.
It does, it does, but this here is so that we can try to maintain that. So that way, when they do this tour throughout the state, because the state's the one going after the grant, it's not just us. And so they wanted support from every single county that wanted to be part of that. Uh, and I did. Whether I was right or wrong in that. It's under my portfolio. So I just said, yes, we're in support of that.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Sounds good.
So, that's all for tonight.
Well, thank you for that presentation. That's very interesting. I don't know that I've seen many of those caterpillars around, so I'm shocked you were able to find them.
My kids went, went downstairs when they, they came up this morning and they come up and say, you've got the woolly worm down there, the woolly worm. And I go, okay, okay, as soon as I'm finished with this call, I'll come down. I went down there and there it was, sitting in the basement.
That's great.
That's cool. All right, um, we have a motion to go into closed session. Commissioner Fackrell, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. Um, I move that we go into closed session to discuss, um, an update on litigation and to a property sale or purchases, updates, and...
Character.
Character and...
Professional competence.
Professional competence of an individual.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. This one is a roll call vote. Commissioner Fackrell.
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell.
Aye.
I vote aye. Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We will move...